Welcome to the May 13th, 2024 Farmington Hills City Council meeting. Calling the meeting to order. Meetings begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have asked Alex Myers, who serves on our Brownfield Development Commission, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, roll call, please.
Council members Aldred.
Here.
Boloware. Here. Bruce.
Here.
Wire.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Mayor Rich.
Here.
Now note that Councilmember Bridges is absent.
And is planning to come a little later today.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, item one, approval of the regular session meeting agenda. I see Ms. Boloware.
I'd like to make a motion to move the impact of the Middle East conflict to the end of the meeting after new business.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there support? Okay, I will support Ms. Boloware's motion.
Can I make amendments to the agenda?
Just have to vote. Well, have you got the vote on this right now?
Right.
Can I offer an amendment?
Yeah.
Council?
You can always offer an amendment or comment on the motion made before it's voted on. It's been seconded, so you're in discussion or other procedures.
I would request that we pull item number three from the agenda. I don't think there's been some people that have had a chance to fully study the proclamation. It was put on the agenda, I think, before some of us had a chance to really consider what was discussed last week at our study session. In fact, I was surprised to see it on the agenda today. I thought that it was going to have more work done on it. I think there's some problematic language in the proclamation that I can't agree with. So I think it would be better to pull it completely and then maybe revisit this once we get a chance to maybe study it a little bit more in depth, see if there's any other modifications, and deal with it at a little bit of a later date.
I would second that amendment.
So Ms. Boloware, do you accept that amendment?
Yeah, I accept the amendment, yes.
Okay. So then, the motion is to, is it table until next meeting?
No.
No, the motion is to fully remove the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Mayor, has there been a second to the amended motion?
There has been a second to that amended motion.
Okay.
Okay. Then, discussion on that, please.
Yeah, I heard what Councilman Bruce said, that because of the, all the council members not having a chance to take a look at it, that we table it or move it until we have a chance to discuss it. And I'd like to see if that's the case, then that we do bring it back at the next, at the date certain of the next council meeting.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Aldred.
I think there is problematic language in this. I agree with Councilmember Bruce in this proclamation I certainly don't agree with. And so whether we can bring it back to the next study session, next council meeting, I think is perhaps unlikely to be able to do that. And again, I think given the amount of public comment that's been on this topic, you know, I think that it deserves full discussion. My personal, I would say there's many reasons why this could be viewed as being a proclamation that's not appropriate for this council to pass or to make. I think there's language in here which goes outside of what our city council should be speaking on, especially with regards, aspects of standing in solidarity with other nations, matters around hostages and humanitarian aid. These are all, we may have opinions on these things, but I believe they're outside of what a proclamation should make. I believe a proclamation should be something that should be nonpolitical and noncontroversial, and something that's, something city council can easily support it. So I think there's a lot of discussion required in order to have language here. And we may even decide that a proclamation isn't appropriate, and this needs to be a resolution that can actually be voted on. I think that would probably give a more robust discussion as opposed to trying to come up with language. I think, I think this is, let me just say, I believe this was a, there was positive intent for putting this proclamation together. I believe that. There's positive intent to try and meet, highlight the local impacts of this conflict. However, the language is such that I don't, I certainly can't agree with it, and I think it should be removed from the agenda.
Ms. Noel and then Dr. Bruce.
Yeah, I support removing it from the agenda as well. It was, you know, the, our council packages go online on Monday, so it hasn't been, this language hasn't been online very long, so there's some people in the community that may have not had a chance to look at it. In the past, when we have done proclamations, they are typically very noncontroversial. Typically, proclamations have been, for example, a nonprofit in our community is having their 50th anniversary, and we do a proclamation just recognizing their contributions to the community for the past 50 years. I mean, that's a pretty noncontroversial proclamation. This is not a noncontroversial proclamation. I think, no matter what it says, I think you can see from what's happening on college campuses and in the news every day, people have very diverse, strong opinions on this topic. And it just went online today. I know I heard from some people who had trouble going online and looking at it, so they have not had a chance to see it or review it or comment. I've heard from other people, both pro that do like it, I've also heard from people that don't like it, that are opposed to it. I mean, some that are for a ceasefire, some are against a ceasefire. I've heard a variety of opinions. So it just, again, it reaffirms that this is not noncontroversial, and for that reason, I think it should be pulled from the agenda. I don't think it's bringing the community together, and I do agree, I think it was a good intent to try, again, to bring these diverse opinions on this controversial topic, try to bring some people together for dialogue, but this is not doing that by any means. All this is doing is continuing to have people email us on all and every side of this issue and fight amongst ourselves and amongst the community. This is not bringing people together. I mean, if you want to bring people together, maybe someone out there can host a symposium, and people of different faiths can get together and have a civil dialogue and conversation about this issue, but I don't think passing this proclamation is going to help bring people together either.
Thank you. Any other comment? Dr. Bruce? Okay, wait. We will have decorum in the council chambers, and this is our business meeting, so please allow us to conduct business without commentary, applause, and anything else. Thank you very much.
Dr. Rich?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I agree with what's been said, and just to be 100% in the open with this, I don't think that we should be doing this at all. I've got a problem with this being a proclamation. Proclamations are typically to deliver good news and congratulations. This has generated, for me, I think between 100 and 200 emails in the last few days. Pretty much 95% from our residents saying, "Don't do this," and I agree with them. The ones on the other side have appeared, there's been a lot of those, but they appear to be nonresidents. And my ears go to the residents, not the nonresidents, because the residents pay taxes. They vote. They suffer the consequences of our decisions, not nonresidents. So those are the people I pay attention to, our residents. But this is just not appropriate for city council to be opining on. It has created divides. We're not going to please everybody if we do this. We're going to, we're going to really make a lot of people upset on either side if we do this, and proclamations have never done that. This really needs to be a resolution if we're going to do this at some future point. I don't agree with doing that either, but at least that's an up and down vote specifically for each council member if it is a resolution, so that's a little bit different. But I think this moves us in a direction that we don't want to go, because there are all kinds of wars and political actions and people being killed and tortured all over the world, and we could get lost in doing international proclamations and not do anything else. And our job is to make sure that police and fires show up at your door, if you call them, and that the garbage gets picked up, and that we have good park systems, not what goes on all the way around the other side of the world. And plus, the proclamation won't have any effect. So I think that that's the most important thing, is listening to our residents, making sure that we stick to city business, and that we stay out of international politics. And that is why I think this should be removed, and certainly shouldn't be a proclamation. Thank you.
Any other conversation? Ms. Boloware.
When I ran for office in November 2019, I stood on my beliefs that this city should be a welcoming city for every resident that live here, regardless of their ethnicity, regardless of their culture, their language, their race. And I think I ran on a platform that this would be a welcoming city for everyone, that all of our programming and everything that we do would be focused on all of our residents. For this, this has been a very difficult discussion for, you know, all of our council members, and we stand where we stand. And it was my opinion that this particular proclamation, which to me, a proclamation just to proclaim something. And I, and it was my impression, and I think that this proclamation simply proclaimed that we support everyone, that we support the rights of the community members, to ask the city council not to weigh in on it. We support those city residents who ask that they're seeking a ceasefire resolution, and we're asking, we're saying that we also support the rights of those people who do want to pursue a ceasefire. So whatever side that you stand on, we want to say, I thought, we hear you and we recognize your concerns. And that's why I thought it would be a good idea to perceive with this, to let everyone know, we hear you and we support whatever position that you hold. When I ran for this office, I ran for local governance and what we should do to be a great city. If the council thinks that perhaps this is better as a resolution and people, individuals can vote, can vote up and down on it, then perhaps we need to look at that and let everyone go on the record about where they stand. I think we all know those who, where we stand, because we've all said something on what we think of this resolution. But my thing is, we live in a great city. We've received countless number of emails from all sides. It's been, you know, very, very difficult. No one wants to be on this list and have a council meeting, which we're trying to do the best things for the interest of our city, to hear the same concerns week after weekend after week and not say that we hear you. So that is my opinion, you know, on this proclamation. We're trying to proclaim to our residents, we hear you and we support whatever you say, wherever you stand.
Anyone else from council want to speak?
I will.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just to follow up again, and again, to reiterate the fact that I believe, I agree with the positive intent that was intended here, and there are many things in that, in the statement that I can agree with. However, I believe it is outside what the city council should be speaking on. And I think even if you look at the emails that we've received, even, even over the last day or so, the nature of those emails have been, for example, emails thanking us for a proclamation supporting a ceasefire, which this certainly is not. And so that just illustrates the fact that despite the best intentions of covering everyone, all sides, what gets, what is put out there is not necessarily the message that's received, a message that is, the message that were received by this going out was that it was a ceasefire proclamation, which it definitely is not. And so therefore, you put a message out there, people misunderstand it, all of a sudden you've got more division than was intended. So despite the fact that the intention may have been greater unity, the result was actually more division because people misunderstood what the language of the proclamation was trying to achieve. And so that's my concern, that really, I believe, and I believe as a city council, we are united on wanting a unified, diverse city, and for us to focus on the business of this city. And I actually think that any form of proclamation would be, would be a mistake.
Okay, thank you. So as the person who put the proclamation on the agenda, I did this because of the reasons that Councilmember Boloware stated. Similarly, I ran to represent all 84,000 of us, whether you're someone who thinks that there should be a ceasefire, whether you're someone who thinks that we should not, there should not be a ceasefire, whether you think we should just mind our own business and totally stay out of this issue. You all still have the rights to be heard, and I will defend your right to be heard on that. I also want our community to know that we see you. We know that there are people who are hurting. We know that we have people in our community who have loved ones who are affected. We have people in our community who have lost people very dear to them, and we want you to know that we hear you, and that when you mourn, we mourn with you. I'd also like to thank the, the members of basically all sides of this conversation for putting in countless hours to work with us on these conversations, on potential language. We heard, and we worked very directly with people who were advocating on the side of a ceasefire. We worked very actively with people in the Jewish community in leadership, and we appreciate the time and energy that everyone has put in to helping us craft this proclamation. I understand that this vote is going to go down, so this is going to be removed from this agenda, but I do want the community to know that we continue to pride ourselves on being a diverse and inclusive community that does value empathy, understanding, and the well-being of its residents, whether you are on one side of a conflict or another. We still value you, and you have a home here in Farmington Hills. So with that, I think that it's a, usually a regular vote. Okay. So all those in favor of approval of the regular session meeting agenda with the withdrawal of item three, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. I'm opposed. Okay. So it carries, the agenda is approved with the withdrawal of item three. We will continue then to proclamation recognizing June 7th, 2024 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And it will be read by Councilmember Dwyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Day is recognized annually.
I apologize for those of you watching us on YouTube or on the cable channel. We had an outburst in the council chamber. Councilmember, I apologize for the interruption.
Whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Day is recognized annually on the first Friday in June to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we must do more to reduce gun violence in our country. And whereas citizens are encouraged to wear orange, the color worn by hunters and gun violence safety activists, on Gun Violence Awareness Day to bring attention to gun deaths, which take many forms, including suicide, homicide, domestic violence, and unintentional shootings. And whereas the city of Farmington Hills is working to end senseless gun violence with evidence-based solutions and encouraging responsible gun ownership that complies with state legislation requiring all handguns be registered with a police department. And whereas gun safety and firearm security are issues of great concern in our city, and the Farmington Hills Police Department encourages all gun owners to properly secure their firearms and store them in the area not accessible to children. And whereas any adult resident of Farmington Hills may obtain a free gun lock from the police department's front lobby command desk 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, through the city and county-wide gun safety lock giveaway program. And whereas the city also seeks to protect public safety by acknowledging that mental illness is a strong component of gun violence and encourages those with violence or suicidal thoughts to seek help and final support through the vast network of resources available to our residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that Teresa Rich, Mayor of the city of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2024 as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Farmington Hills, and calls upon all citizens to help save lives by taking steps to prevent the tragedy of gun violence and encourage everyone to seek help rather than turn to violence and harm innocent members of society. And accepting.
Thank you. And accepting, we have representatives from Moms Demand Action. You can take the proclamation from Councilmember.
Rich, is there the official one? This is a copy. We'll get one.
We'll get one to them. Yep.
Want to take this one for now?
I'm sorry?
For now. You'll get the ceremonial in a bit. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sylvia. This is Mia and Diane.
And can you please speak into the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Sylvia. This is Mia and Diane, and we're here supporting the proclamation that you have issued. And it is important to honor and remember all the victims and survivors of gun violence across our nation. The recent passage of gun safety laws in Michigan, including safe storage and extreme risk protection orders, is a movement in the right direction, and we champion these successes. However, there is so much more work to be done. As a matter of fact, the three of us, along with many other like-minded people, are heading to Lansing tomorrow to advocate for additional gun safety legislation. So please join us in the national effort to bring attention to this ongoing work by wearing orange on Friday, June 7th, which is the color chosen to honor the memory of too many lives lost and impacted by gun violence. Let's make it so people are asking why we're all wearing orange. Let's make it a show of support for the families across the nation who have been so sadly and unnecessarily affected by gun violence. Thank you again, Mayor and city council members, for issuing and supporting the gun violence proclamation in the city of Farmington Hills.
Thank you for your good work. Okay, next up, we have announcements and presentations from city boards, commissions, and public officials. And did I see that we have a representative from emergency preparedness today? And I think we also have representation from the Farmington Area Commission on Aging? Or did they just leave the? Okay. Yep, you'll be next. Okay. Please. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and guests. My name is Dan Wecker. I'm a representative of the Emergency Preparedness Commission. And as you know, once a month, we bring a topic of concern about preparedness. This month's topic is child safety seats. As summer is just around the corner, and it's time to make sure that your child's safety seat is prepared for the hustle and bustle and all that we do in the warm weather, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration provides guidelines regarding child safety seats. One of those is that infants, which are anybody under one year of age, should be in rear-facing child safety seats. Children over one through eight or 65 pounds should be in a child safety seat, regardless, but they could be forward-facing. Michigan, the state of Michigan, requires that children are in those safety seats until they're eight years old or four feet nine inches tall. You might be surprised that over half of the, even though parents think that they are installing these safety seats correctly, over half of them are installed incorrectly. And we in the fire department put on free safety inspections, the next one being this month on the 18th in the morning. If you register, you could register on FD Events at FHGOV.com. I also invite you to participate or register for any one of our CPR, AED, and first aid classes, because that's a life skill that I think we all should participate in and be able to help each other out there in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And for any of you with kids that use car seats, the fire department does an absolutely tremendous service with assistance with car seat installation, so please do make those appointments. They make a difference. And good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. And I'm Dan Fantore, Chair of the Farmington Area Commission on Aging. And we understand that you considered a, I think you re-engaged the consultants to study what's happening with the caustic center. And the Farmington Area Commission on Aging has been talking with the users of the caustic center, and we feel confident that we know what they, what they want. And Councilmember, or Mayor Protam Bridges was at our last meeting, and we were able to convey to him what the seniors wanted. And he, I, he probably has talked to you about maybe coming to visit the caustic center and talking to the users there. So we hope you take us up on that offer. So if you have any questions about what is happening with the seniors and what we want at the caustic center, feel free to give me a call. My liaison's number is on the paper that I gave you, Marcia Coet. And Mayor Protam Bridges has been in touch with us. He's our council liaison, so we hope to see you at the caustic center.
Great. Thank you very much. For those watching, we had another little bit of an outburst. Let's please, just let us do our business. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have correspondence. Anyone have correspondence that they want to share? Ms. Noel.
Thank you for, to the Commission on Aging for being here tonight. I just want to point out, we're on correspondence. I know I have received emails from many of the seniors in the community that use the caustic center. I don't know if, some of them, I think, just came to me, maybe some of them went to everyone, but I, just so you know, I did receive them. We forwarded them on to the city manager. So please know your email was received. Most of them had to do with their enjoyment of the pool at the caustic center. And please know, we heard you, and there are many of us that are, want to ensure that your opinion is heard. I think you know that we have engaged the consultant again to come up with some more recommendations about special services in the community. And definitely, all of this council, let it be known that we want to make sure that the users of the caustic center have a voice and that your opinions are taken into consideration. We even suggested maybe putting a computer at the. It's unfortunate that they choose to be disruptive out there and not let us get on with our business, such as talking about the caustic center. But we've even talked about putting up a computer at the caustic center so that when people are there, they can take the survey. And again, I apologize if you can't hear me. We're actually discussing city business right now, and unfortunately, we have people at this. this council meeting who are choosing to comment on international foreign affairs and disrupting our council meeting at the moment.
Most of whom are non-residents.
Thank you, Ms. Knoll. So similarly, a number of us have been receiving correspondence regarding the caustic, and just want to reaffirm our dedication to making sure we have senior services.
We are speaking as loud as we can. Again, if maybe the people in the hallway would be more respectful.
I think that's going to happen. Please quiet down. Please quiet down.
Excuse me. This is not public comment. So we could go into recess, or we can continue. Okay. And we are going to continue the meeting. Next up is the consent agenda, which will be read to us by Ms. Bolware.
Yeah. I get my glasses. Yes. Yeah. The consent agenda for May 13, number nine, recommend approval of the temporary polling location changes for Precinct 10 from Kenbrook Elementary to Prince of Peace Lutheran Church and Precinct 11 from Farmington Central High School to Wood Creek Elementary for the August 6, 2024 election only. And the approval of the permanent polling location change for Precinct 1 from Warner Middle School to Woodside Baptist Church. Item number 10, recommended approval of permit to be issued to Wolverine Fireworks Display Incorporated to hold a fireworks display at Franklin Hills Country Club on May 26, 2024, with the rain date of May 27, 2024. Number 11, recommended approval of permit to be issued to Wolverine, I think I said that. Number 11, recommended approval of a special event permit for the Sixth Annual Farmington Area Juneteenth Celebration to be held on Friday, June 14, 2024, and Saturday, June 15, 2024. Number 12, recommended approval of Oakland County Tactical Training Consortium Membership Agreement, CMR 52442. 13, recommended adoption of a resolution for reimbursement of eligible expenses related to the Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund Program, CMR 52443. Number 14, recommended approval of, as needed, purchase of OEM engine parts and repairs for emergency and DPW vehicles to Cummins Sales and Services for an annual amount of $38,000, CMR 52444. Number 15, recommended approval of a request for employment under Section 1001A of the city charter for a concession attendant. Number 16, recommended approval of a request for employment under Section 1001A of the city charter for a camp instructor. Number 17, recommended approval of a request for employment under Section 1001A of the city charter for a preschool instructor, sports, and recreation. Number 18, recommended approval of a request for employment under Section 1001A of the city charter for a lifeguard. Number 19, recommended approval of a request for employment under Section 1001A of the city charter for a pro shop car attendant. I'm going to say the last two because he wasn't here, so to number 20.
All right. So.
Number 19.
Number 20?
Number 19.
Did you do number 20?
Yes. I need a motion for not 9 through 19.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
20 through 20.
20, 9 through 20.
Okay. We're looking for a motion for items 9 through 19, please, or 20?
Support.
Okay, so, okay, so moved by Member Bruce, supported by Member Knoll. Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Please quiet down. Councilmembers Aldred.
Yes.
Yes.
Bolware?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Okay. This was 9 to 20, correct?
Number 21, recommended approval of city council steady session meeting minutes of April 24, 2024. And number 22, recommended approval of city council regular session meeting minutes of April 22, 2024.
Okay, is there a motion? Moved by Dwyer, support. Support by Dr. Bruce. This is also a roll call vote.
Members Bolware?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer? Dwyer?
I was here, wasn't I?
You abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you. Knoll?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
He was here.
Wait, 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 wait.
He was there.
Okay, okay, yes.
Passes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember comments and announcements.
Okay. All right.
Anyone for councilmember comments and announcements?
Nope.
Okay. All right. City manager update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of quick comments. Just wanted to let the city know that the city of Farmington Hills participated in the National League of Cities Roadshow last week, and was kind of an interesting opportunity for the city of Farmington Hills to showcase itself, along with several other, several other communities across the country, celebrating the 100th anniversary of the National League of Cities. And to be a part of that was a special experience. I'd like to give a special shout-out to April Hire, our recreational supervisor, who has served as the tour guide for the event. Also like to bring the residents' attention and the council's attention that there was an article in the municipal magazine about overpopulation, concerns of deer in Michigan and in the Midwest. And so we're not alone in that, in that issue, folks. Just want to let you know, and you know, we've had several conversations here at city council over the last few years about just how to manage that urban deer herd. Want to thank residents that showed up at the Household Hazardous Waste Day last weekend. We had over 1,483 participants, which is a 20% increase over last year. So it's nice that residents are utilizing our Household Hazardous Waste Days to dispose of those types of waste rather than dumping them down drains or exposing them into the environment. And then the last thing I'd like to do is a special thank you to Karen Mandora, Assistant City Manager, for covering while I was out of town the last couple of weeks. She did an excellent job. And also to my staff for not giving her too many problems during that period of time. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
I'd like to echo what our city manager said about Karen Mandora's performance when it's absent. I think she did a tremendous job during a very difficult period, and I know she put in some really long hours, and I think that she's been a great addition to your staff.
Agreed. Agreed. Thank you for that. Okay. With that, we go into item four, public hearing and consideration of approval on the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Zoning, Article 5.0, Site Standards, Section 5.5, Signs, to include a new Section 3A, 9 little I H, addressing the area of electronic display areas. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of city council. Eric Prodonik, city planner, here with you tonight to introduce this zoning tax amendment. It'd be our first of the year 2024. And as the mayor said, it will be addressing the area in square feet, particularly of electronic display areas in the city. So start off with this slide here, where, what are we recommending limiting the size of? So according to the International Sign Association, an electronic display area is a sign that is capable of displaying words, symbols, figures, or images that can be changed by remote or automatic means. So this could be as simple as a lot of bank signs, for example. You see temperature, time, things like that. At a gas station, you'll see pricing, obviously, on their signage. Those are some examples of some kind of hybrid electronic and static signage. And then there's also the very large kind of billboards, which are generally noticeable, particularly at nighttime. So there's two really kind of noteworthy examples of very large EDAs within the city of Farmington Hills. There is one on the westbound side of I-275, just south of 10 Mile, that is 360 square feet in size. And that one is at the back of the Farmington Industrial Park there. And then there's also another on the west side of M-5, just north of Grand River, which is 378 square feet in area. And that's actually situated on the property of a self-storage facility along the highway there. Just kind of show you the locations of those two existing signs. This is the one south of 10 along 275 here. That is a picture of it kind of as you're passing down the roadway, and then a more zoomed-in photo of it there. And then this would be the location of the one along M-5, that little red flag indicating it. Kind of a zoomed-out version again of that one, and then a more zoomed-in version. These two examples are 100% electronic, in this case. Some other examples of EDAs in southeast Michigan. Here's one at the Michigan Lottery Amphitheater, which is quite large. We have one here associated with a liquor store. And then we have kind of a stretch of roadway here where we see a few of them lined up, kind of proliferating on that particular stretch of road. So the question is, why are we asking to regulate this type of signage? And, you know, including but certainly not limited to, there's kind of four points I made here where, you know, light pollution is a big one. Certainly, these have the potential to create a lot of sky glow, especially with kind of the white backlighting. They're particularly problematic for older drivers. They kind of have a blinding effect to them. The traffic safety aspect itself, where obviously these types of signs are meant to take your attention off the road and onto them. That's really the intent and the point of it. There are some studies out there that show correlation between a large number of these signs along roadways and increased accidents, whereas accidents in other areas without these types of signs had decreased at the same time. Another aspect certainly is visual blight. They're quite visually impactful, particularly at night. Signs like this in communities that haven't seen many of them, for example, it could become sort of a landmark for the wrong reasons, is kind of how I would put it. Certainly just kind of a community aesthetic character issue in that respect. Energy consumption is another one. These tend to use a ton of energy. They run 24 hours a day. One of them uses, on average, as much energy as 15 U.S. households, which is quite interesting. So getting to the amendment.
I couldn't hear you. Fifteen what?
15 U.S. households.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So getting to the amendment itself, what we're proposing to do is bring down the size of these a little bit, especially the much larger ones. So we're proposing that the electronic display area of a sign would not exceed 30% of the total sign area, or 30 square feet, whichever would be larger. So here, I've kind of shown, kind of in descending order, what our largest permitted sign area would be in Farmington Hills, and then kind of going down from there. So 300 square feet, about 90 square feet of the sign could be electronic, 150, only 45 square feet. And then when you go down into more, your usual signage sizes that you see mostly in the commercial districts in Farmington Hills, like B-2, 3, 4, all of our office districts, where you're at either 64 or 32 square feet, you would get up to 30 square feet. So we don't think that there's a lot of risk with respect to nonconformity, because actually a lot of these gas station signs and things, they're about 32 to 64 square feet. So, I mean, it affects different size signs a little bit differently, but we thought this was kind of a good medium to bring down the size, while still allowing people the right to have some ability to advertise electronically. And with that, I'll conclude my introduction. If anybody has any questions.
Okay, I see. Dr. Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor. If this is passed, the two existing signs would be grandfathered in, correct?
The two existing signs, actually neither was permitted by traditional means under the zoning ordinance. One was granted a variance by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The second was part of a consent judgment, actually. So both of those signs would not become nonconforming, actually because of that legal status, essentially.
So, but they would, they would be nonconforming. That nonconformity would still continue?
Yes. Yes. Both of those would be able to continue. Yes.
So, but if they were modified substantially, would they lose that grandfathering in or that?
I don't believe so in the case of either a variance or a consent judgment, because those run with the land, essentially. So it's kind of tied to the sign for its duration.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Knoll?
The city sign by the ice rink, just curious what the size of that is.
The new one?
Yeah.
Boy, you caught me flat-footed on that one. I don't think I have those dimensions.
That would be in compliance, correct? That's really what I want to make sure, that it would be in compliance.
You got an answer for that, Eric?
I think we have to be around 64 square feet on that one, somewhere in the neighborhood. Is my thought.
Yeah, but that is in a, what's the zoning right there?
It's probably either residential or, actually, the ice arena, I think, in particular, would be special purpose.
We can certainly look into that and get it back to council.
I just want to make sure that we're in compliance.
Right.
Because that's a brand-new sign that just went up. I wouldn't want to have a problem, and obviously, the city should live by the same rules as we're requiring the businesses to live by. So I just want to make sure, if this is changed, that we're all living under the same ordinance and that we meet the, we meet the signage requirement.
Counselor?
Whether we have to or not, I want to make sure we do. I get it, Steve. I just want to make sure that we're living under the same rules.
Right. Okay. And anyone else? Are there any businesses with existing signs today that would be disadvantaged, that would not be covered under that consent decree or the zoning variance that's been made already?
No, because actually, these kind of signs are pretty rare, actually, to have electronic sign this large in Farmington Hills. We couldn't find any examples that we thought would be particularly burdened by this amendment.
So we're not burdening any existing businesses?
Yeah, this was actually crafted to, to really allow the kind of gas stations and banks and things like that to kind of operate as normal, without other signs becoming nonconforming.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. And that's it for that one, because that was just, actually, I'll open the public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this, please come forward now on this topic. Public hearing is open. There's someone over there. I see.
I have to be, I'm ready to sign the pass, I'd like to speak today.
This is, this is on the topic at hand this evening, Stephen. Okay, so we're going to then, I see no one wishing to speak at the public hearing, so at this time, I will declare the public hearing closed. Thank you very much. Next, I, actually, approval is next, so I'd be looking for a motion, please. Dr. Bruce?
I would move the approval of the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Zoning, Article 5.0, Site Standards, Section 5.5, Signs, to include, include a new subsection, 3-point-A dot I X dot H, addressing the area of electronic display areas.
Support. Okay, moved by Dr. Bruce, supported by Ms. Bolware. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Aldred?
Yes.
Bolware?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that then takes us on to unfinished business. Item five, consideration of approval of the enactment of an ordinance, C-5-2024, amending the city, the Farmington Hills City Code, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Liquors, Article 2, Licensing, to repeal Section 4-43 and amend Section 4-46 to remove the requirement of a bona fide restaurant operation for on-premises liquor licenses and summary for publication. Is there a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion. I will make a motion that we approve the enactment of an ordinance, C-5-2024, amending the Farmington Hills City Code, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Liquors, Article 2, Licensing, to repeal Section 4-43 and amend Section 4-46 to remove.
the Farmington Hills City Code, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Liquors, Article 2, Licensing, to repeal Section 4-43 and amend Section 4-46 to remove the requirement of a bona fide restaurant operation for the on-premises liquor license and summary for publication.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there support? Support by Aldred. Motion by Ms. Knoll. And this, any discussion before the vote? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Noel?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Mayrich?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, one moment, please. So, folks, we've been, for those on TV, you're not experiencing what is being experienced in chambers and in the courtroom, in the council chambers. We've continued to have chanting and disorderly conduct throughout this meeting that has been interrupting our ability to do business. They've been shouting out our speakers and shouting down our presenters, and it's very difficult for council members to hear each other, even with the microphones. And so I am very sorry to have to say this at this point in time, but if the people in the hallway fail to come to order, this meeting will be going into recess, into the study session room, and the Chief King's team will either clear or resolve the situation of the chanting. So, no, excuse me, there is no comment, there is no comment from within the council chambers. We're doing business now. So, that being said, at the moment, we are able to hear ourselves, and as long as that continues, great. But if that begins again, and we are unable to conduct the business of this city, which is the purpose of this meeting, my friends, then I am afraid we are going to have to clear the room in the hall, which is technically because the TVs are on so that people can watch the council meeting during, because that's overflow space, and this room's pretty well full. It is a continuation of the council chambers, and so we need to have order and decorum so that we can do the business of the city. So, at this moment, we will continue. And that takes us, please, to new business. Item six, consideration of approval of a request from Dharmic LLC for the transfer of ownership of an Escrowed 2023 Resort B Hotel and SDM liquor license with Sunday sales, AM and PM, outdoor service, dance entertainment permit, and three bars located at 33103 Hamilton Court. And who is presenting this, please? Yes.
Well, I can speak out on a couple things.
Okay. Please.
Thank you. So we did receive a request to transfer ownership of the 2023 Resort B Hotel and SDM licenses with permits from-
Sir, you're out of order. We had a gentleman walking through the council chambers, holding a sign. Thank you.
From FH Hospitality to Dharmic LLC, this establishment is operating as a Holiday Inn and Suites located at 33103 Hamilton Court, and the license will be used at the existing location. So I believe the applicant or one of the representatives are here, if you'd like to come up.
Sir, you may, please. Good evening, and thank you for doing business in Farmington Hills. Please be sure to speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
Thank you for doing business in Farmington Hills. We just acquired this hotel in December of 2023. We are applying for the liquor license.
I apologize, sir, we're going to go into-
No, let's finish this side. This man came out, let's finish it.
Thank you, sir, okay.
Actually, that is it.
Okay.
Please.
So, yeah, we are applying for, getting the liquor license for the permit from the city of Farmington Hills, and I'm here for that process.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our applicant? Okay. Any comments by council?
No.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Knoll?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve a request from Dharmic LLC for the transfer of ownership of an Escrowed 2023 Resort B Hotel and SDM liquor license with Sunday sales, AM and PM, outdoor service, dance entertainment permit, and three bars located at 33103 Hamilton Court.
Okay, thank you. Motion, is there a second, please?
I second.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Boloware. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Boloware?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
And Mayrich?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Item number seven, consideration of approval of the distribution of the draft 2024 Master Plan for Future Land Use. Hooray. Who would like to take this one? Oh, there you are. Excuse me, Jill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jill Bame, partner with Giffords Webster, the city's planning consultants. Here this evening, very delighted to present the working draft, final working draft of the city's master plan. As you know, Planning Commission has been working on this document for about two years, and it has been a very long and interesting process. Several of the council members have been part of this process through the study session, and in fact, Councilmember Aldred, I believe, was joining our meetings even before he became a council member. So several of you have been involved in this process and are aware of the information that's contained therein, and the deliberations that the Planning Commission has had for the last couple of years, thinking about the strengths of the community and strategizing for long-range, the future for the city. So where we are in the process is that the master plan, according to the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, has to be available for 63 days before the Planning Commission can hold the public hearing that's required for adoption. So this request before you this evening is simply to allow staff to release the document as required to the reviewing agencies, Oakland County Planning and Economic Development Services, as well as your surrounding communities, your neighbors. So they all have a chance to take a look at that. The reviewing communities are not looking to give their seal of approval on your plan. This is the city of Farmington Hills' plan. They are primarily looking to ensure that any of the areas in which they abut the city, that we are planning properly and not creating any land use conflicts, which we do not believe that there are any. So I'm happy to go through a little bit more of the process, or any of the highlights of the plan, but I will leave that up to you, based on the agenda that you have before you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Yes, Mr. Aldred, or discussion, go ahead.
No, I was going to move unless there's discussion.
Yes, please. Yep.
Yes, so, Madam Mayor, thank you. I move the approval of the distribution of the draft 2024 Master Plan for Future Land Use.
Thank you. Motion by Aldred, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Boloware. Any discussion on the item? This is a regular vote.
Mayor?
Oh, sorry, yes.
So I just wanted to take the opportunity, we have a lot of people in the crowd today. This is a very important planning document for your community, and it really sets the tone and the vision for the city, for the next decade or two. So we really would appreciate it if folks in the audience would take the time to take a look at it, review it. There's been a lot of opportunity for public input already. But when you do that, keep in mind, this isn't for any of us in this room. These are for folks that are going to live here 10, 15, 20 years from now. So it's a very far, it's actually a visioning document of what we want our city to look like in 10, 15, 20 years. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just want to make one more comment, very nice comments, I echo that. I just want to also add, though, that with all of this, again, it's a vision, and it's not necessarily means that it's going to take place tomorrow. It also doesn't mean that the city is necessarily going to do this. If, for example, you look at it and you see, oh, they're proposing a development here, it doesn't mean the city's going to do it. The private, the private industry is still the one who has to come and invest in Farmington. But what it does is it gives private industry kind of a guideline or a vision of what our zoning is and what we would want, you know, the city to look like.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Aldred.
I had a comment as well, and to agree, I think it's a really good opportunity just to encourage members of the residents and the community to look at this master plan. There's a lot of good information in there. There's going to be some things you really like, maybe some things that you don't like in there, and this is a great opportunity to give feedback to that plan. And so I think, I just want to echo those comments, I think it's a, there's maybe even some things in there you disagree philosophically, and again, that's a great opportunity to give that feedback.
Okay, thank you. And how many days?
We have a 63-day review period, I'm just jumping right in.
Thank you.
63-day review period with a public hearing likely in July. And so if people do want to take a look at that, it's available on the city's website, and there is ways, there are ways for people to comment by sending, communicating with staff, or attending, sending a letter, coming to a public hearing. That'll be noticed on the city's website as well. And I would just sort of echo everything that you all have said, the points that you've made about the document itself being a long-range vision. It's also a guide for you and for the Planning Commission. I've been with you several times over the last, gosh, even, well, even the last year. A lot of times coming to you, and we, your question is, well, what does the master plan say? And we were looking at a document that was created in 2009. A lot's changed since then. So now we have this fresh, new plan that will hopefully provide you with clearer guidance for the ways in which the city can control and guide development, and also have a fairly robust action plan in the document, too, that does require some actions on behalf of the city, some zoning changes that we might want to be working on, some advocacy and education and items to put into our capital improvement plan. So it is a guide for the development community and property owners, business owners, residents, and the city as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, this is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, Carice.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much. Item eight, consideration of adoption of a resolution amending the rules of the city council and guidelines of conduct. And so in our packet, we have some items that have been proposed for our council rules. Counselor, anything that we want to add on this? Because we did just have a study session on this.
Yes, just a-
Please.
Very briefly, these are the draft amendments to the city council meeting rules that were discussed by city council. Tried to put them in a form that met with the comments that were received from city council. Of course, there was no vote on this during city council. They are brought back to you in the form of a resolution that would be adopted. If you approve this resolution, these modifications that you see in the packet would become effective June, the first meeting of June this year.
Okay, so that'll be effective.
Another effective date, of course.
So that would make everything effective June 10th?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then, is there a motion? Mr. Dwyer?
I'll make a motion to move for the adoption of the resolution amending the rules of the city council and guidelines of conduct.
Support.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion and support. Is there any discussion?
Just like to make a comment, I think you did a good job in summarizing what was a fairly robust discussion, and I believe what you ended up with, Mr. Jopik, was a very, very good summary, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. And just, I should mention that Chief King, who's not in the room, he also reviewed them. As you know, he had some input on them, and city manager's office and clerk's office also.
Got to love a team effort, thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, Carice. We have no additions to the agenda, which then takes us to public comment. Do we want a brief recess before public comment, or do we want to just start rolling?
I'm okay. Why don't you restate the rules?
Ah, very good.
For everyone, there's a lot of new people here.
Yep.
Just kind of so people know what the rules of public comment are, but I say we get going, and then maybe in a little bit, we may need to take a break.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so, let me see, is this- Counselor, do you have that handy? Perfect, thank you. All righty. Okay, so, since we do have some new people here this evening, just to share, here's how public comment works. And we ask you to line up, just, you know, a couple, three of you in line at a time, and then add to it as time goes on, please. So when you're speaking at public comment, no one speaks during public comment unless you are recognized by the chair, which would be me. Prior to addressing council, you'll come to the microphone, state your name, and if you're affiliated with a group, what group you are with. We also ask that you share if you are a resident of Farmington Hills, or where you are a resident of. Council comments are to be directed to council, not to people in the audience. When you address council, you will have five minutes. You will be speaking to us. Comment is only by speaking, it does not include yielding time to others. You are not able to play audio or video recordings. You may certainly feel free to comment upon any action, inaction, or performance of the council and the City of Farmington Hills commissions, boards, and employees and consultants. However, anything that is profane, vulgar, or abusive, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. If you have materials that you want us to receive, please inform or signal to the clerk, and Carly will pass them along to us to hand out. Members of the public shall not disturb speakers while they're at the podium, and shall not interrupt council members or staff while they're speaking during a meeting or disrupt. Comments by people in the audience, by voice, clapping or otherwise showing approval, disapproval, is not allowed. And that's what we have to share. So with that, first person, please come to the microphone.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, excuse me.
May I just make a comment? Would it be also good to just clarify what's going to come into effect as in the first meeting of June?
Oh, yeah, and then, starting the first meeting of June, this is something we voted on some weeks, actually, a couple months ago. The speaking time will be going from five minutes to three minutes, consistent with what we see in just about every city around us. And then, and then we will also be asking people to fill out blue cards. We think that'll help us be more effective. But for purposes of this last meeting in May, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, please, name, city that you live in, and you have your time. Yep, it's you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anita, and I've been a-
And remember, you're speaking to council.
Huh?
You're talking to us. Yep, there you go.
Good evening, council. My name's Anita. I've been a resident here for 30 years, grew up, all my three children, and my one son just bought a house here in Farmington, and my other son also lives in Farmington. So we're still a very strong family to support this community. So I'm part of the 50-plus senior community, so I'm going to add on to what the gentleman said earlier and be concerned about the consulting- said earlier and be concerned about the, the consulting cer, consulting firm for the caustic center. So for the caustic center and the programs, I want to have that supported, the programs and the pool, very, very important. I have heard that someone had considered moving us from the caustic center to the Hawk. And so do not move us to the Hawk. The concert that I went to on Friday was all kid-oriented. It was Disney, all Disney. So I kind of left early because it's not the same as what I've used to for years and years and years. It had changed, and it didn't say online that it was all Disney. So number two, the parking lot is not easy to maneuver over at the Hawk for us. Pickleball is not even there, but pickleball is very popular to the seniors. I would like that to be continued. The food is very important. We have a full, a full lunch service there that is very, very needed, not only for the food cost being reduced, but also for socialization. We've been able to make friends and contact and support each other. Some people go there just because they're lonely, and they can just walk in and talk to somebody. And the Hawk does not have that. Theirs is just a warming kitchen. Also, the Hawk pool is not as big, and the water is freezing, so some of us don't go to the Hawk. We go to the caustic where the pool is warm. And then also, I went last week, I took the numbers, there were 36 of us in the, in the pool. I have a picture to show you. And the lifeguard said we were at capacity for the 10 o'clock class, 36. Any more than that, she has to turn them away. So we can't close that and move over to the Hawk. Plus, the Hawk would not be able to have enough to serve us and them as well, because I also included in a packet for you to look at that we have pretty much, the Hawk has a big, a big list of activities. And then also, if you look at, this is just for seniors. We have from 6:30 in the morning, lap swim, 9 o'clock, water exercise, senior water exercise at 10, senior open swim at 11, modified swim at 12, senior open swim at 2, modified swim 4 and 5, and then also evening, just for the seniors. So with that, looking at the Hawk, there's no way you could add all of this that's in here for the caustic and put it on the Hawk's schedule and mix us together. It would not work. And what the Hawk has to offer only has, has one, they have a lap swim, and they only have one thing for seniors. The same thing for, the same thing for the, the exercise, they do have a chair exercise. Out of all of this, this would be one thing for us seniors. So anyways, and then also, the meal plan is, is set up, and a lot of people go for that. And for the meal plan, we've had it where, like, if it's for bingo, we have so many people that come that we don't have extra seating if a bus comes with, about a month ago, we had a bus that brought some special people that needed special help, and they came in and they did bingo, but that took up all of our extra seating, and so there wasn't any room for anymore. So my concern, that maybe the, the research may not come up, the Rose facility that's right behind us, they're going to have 240 independent people moving into the, oh, is my five minutes up?
That's your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and the city you live in.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Tyson. Nice to meet you. I've been here before, but this has had to do with the water and sewer. My bill is outrageous. All I have is a sewer line, and my well is broke, so I'm not even using it, but my bill went up $22. My neighbors are anywhere from 145, 150, up to 170, and they have full families, two, four, five people. I'm by myself, and I have a sewer line, but mine's $212. That was my last bill. That's outrageous. Oh, well, we don't know how much water's going down your sewer. Well, come out to my house and look at it. I can show you that I don't use that. My well's out. It's been out since December. So there, and it's $3,000 to get it fixed. I live on social security. But $212 when the other people are using Farmington water and the sewer, and their bill is $165, $170. And I've got one line with one person, and there is four and five. And then, right here on this street, right down the road, on the same side, right, Miles Bentley has a house that he rents. Hasn't had anybody in there in nine months, and it's, nobody's there, but he doesn't get a break on the bill. He gets the same bill every three months. It's like the mafia. Got to pay them. Well, it's nothing but perjudicing extortion. It's not fair. Why should I have to pay so much money for nothing? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. Your name, please, and where you live.
Good evening, Murray Khan. Been here 40 years in Farmington Hills. First, I'd like to apologize to the board for my participation in a little bit of a commotion that last time I was here in a meeting. I was escorted out. This is a bigger commotion. I think some people should be escorted out. On October 7th, 2023, the duly-elected government of the Palestinian people attacked the country of Israel. Over 2,000 men and women, children, and infants were brutally, criminally murdered. Women were raped, mutilated, infants were cut in half and burned in ovens. Young adults were tied together with wire and burned alive. And over 200 were taken as hostages, and 130 still live in terror tunnels being used as human shields. I want to thank some of you on the board for having the moral clarity and backbone to withstand the weekly onslaught by those insisting you produce a letter demanding a ceasefire in Gaza. Only release of the hostages will result in a ceasefire. These people threaten you with replacing you in the next election, and to contact your place of employment and your business relationships, all in an attempt to make you do their bidding. These threats to you are defined as extortion, and these people should be arrested and charged as such. They have done this to me with a widely distributed email with my employer's phone number to urge my employer to fire me. Fortunately, my employer knows that I've been training my Muslim podiatry brothers and sisters to be good surgeons for over 15 years. So what if you were to put out such a statement? Would it end the war? Would it release the hostages? No. A ceasefire letter is only the first demand. You would then be extorted to divest from anything related to Israel. This mafia has no interest in the improvement of our city. Their interests lie in the Middle East. As we have seen across the country, this type of extortion has spread to our university campuses. There we can see the results of capitulating to the demands of those who do not believe in Western society and want the downfall of the United States. So why do we see campuses filled with students supporting Hamas, a designated terrorist organization that uses its own people as human shields and has the destruction of the Jewish people as its ultimate goal? It is because of what they don't learn in our public schools any longer. There's no civics nor history of the U.S. except from a negative perspective bankrolled by foreign money. There is a concerted effort to radicalize our youth, and it starts in the schools. I would implore the Farmington Hills City Council to urge the Farmington Hills School Board to get back to the roots of educating a good American citizen rather than a citizen of the world, as declared in their mission statement. And if they don't take your advice, you should start your own Farmington Hills Academy Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Stephen Lovell. I come from Forteen Orchard. I mean, I do agree with what you said earlier about getting out international affairs. I mean, I do agree to keeping up with, I mean, city services, like offering buses or garbage pickup and sewage, what you said earlier.
Thank you, Stephen.
Oh, yeah. Soon.
Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Good evening.
Bring the microphone down, dear.
Turn it down. I am short. Good evening. My name is Linda Bodzen, and I am a longtime Farmington Hills resident. I'm here with a lot of my friends from the caustic center. As you can see, there's probably, what, about 20, 25 of us? Some of us left. They had to go. And today I was informed that we had probably 40 people in the pool between the 9 o'clock class and the 10 o'clock class. That's pretty good. It's not the 70 that the other person suggested, but a few weeks ago, but certainly there's a lot of women and men that are there. I am here today to talk about the caustic center. However, I want to thank first and applaud those who are now seeking to find grants and other monies to build a new senior center. We know this is a lengthy process and will take years, though those here tonight want to implore you to maintain the caustic center. When the Hawk was proposed, multiple, multiple meetings were held. Ideas were sought from the community, community about what should be included. My question in that of what others were saying was, what about the caustic center? Assurances were given that the caustic center would become the senior center, upgraded and improved. Newspaper articles contained comments by staff and council members saying the same. What has happened to the, what has happened in the intervening years to change the attitudes and the perceptions of caustic? It should not be a casualty of a budget deficit. The caustic center is more than a place to go. It is a destination. The options for activities daily are endless. It would be a profound loss, too many, if it were to close prior to another center being opened. Certainly, there would be some of us who would find our way to the Hawk. We would complain that water is cold, can't hear anything, and our knees hurt as it is too shallow to work out, and would eventually leave and find some other pool to go to. But what happens to those who are, but what happens to those who are using their walkers and canes, those with arthritis, or those who need the warmth of the pool? What happens to those with low vision or hearing impairment? Do we just exclude them from optimizing their health and living bitter? I could go on about the millages and the bonds we supported, but you already know that we did that. What you don't know is that the loss would be, what, excuse me, what you don't know is that the loss would be to the senior community, to the man who's reading quietly in the corner waiting for lunch, to the people who are playing cards, the daughter who is bringing her mother to the pool because she knows it will help her, and to those who are playing pickleball. And to me, going to the pool several times a week, talking with friends I have made throughout the years that I've been there, which is 13, entering a warm pool and exercising with a great staff. I am not alone, and as I said, we implore you to maintain the caustic center during this time of transition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Gerald Dotson, Canton, Michigan. I want to thank, first of all, for my last speech, the 144,000 people that are following me on TikTok and asking me to run for president. Joe Biden, as we call him, Genocide Joe, is morally bankrupt. Sending arms to kill babies in hospitals with our taxpayer dollars is against God and it's against America. It is wrong. It is morally wrong. And Netanyahu is acting like Hitler. 195 UN peace workers killed. Bombing of convoys to help the injured and wounded, that's a conch ball. And destroying, out of 36 hospitals, 30 have been destroyed with the people still in them. That's not war. I've been in three of them, and I worked on Desert Storm at the White House. This is not war. This is genocide. And the only way we can stop this and show our displeasure about this is getting a ceasefire proclamation or resolution. However, I lived in Farmington Hills for five years, so I know the city. I don't feel this board is willing to have the courage to say, stop the genocide, stop killing babies in hospitals. You're just going to let the status quo go on, and you're going to be complicit as everybody else who supports Israel in genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be no responses to public comment. That is out of order. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in, sir.
Hello there. Just give me one minute, please. My name is Dr. Nadal Jaboor. I'm a doctor from Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I'm a co-founder of a new organization called Doctors Against Genocide. We had to find this organization because our politicians failed their duty. They failed humanity. They failed the children of the world. They are only listening to the AIPAC, to the Israel lobby, to the military-industrial complex. They don't listen to the people or to humanity, and that's why we are here, because it is our moral obligation to be here. It is your moral obligation, our collective moral obligation, to defend humanity and the children of the world. Give me a second, please. I need my glasses. Okay, I have them here. I come before you today with a plea for immediate, permanent, and unconditional ceasefire to save the lives of children, women, and men facing brutal mass slaughter and genocide in Gaza. As Americans, as human beings, we cannot afford to remain silent in the face of such heinous crimes and the constant loss of life for the last eight months. More than 15,000 children have been murdered by Israel already using American weapons, American bombs, your tax dollar, my tax dollar, this city investments. More than 10,000 mothers have been murdered so far by Israel using American money, American protection, American funding. Yesterday was the Mother's Day, and I think this is the way America celebrates Mother's Day, by murdering more than 10,000 mothers with their money, with their weapons, with their complicity with approval or Genocide Joe. More than 40,000 civilians have been murdered. More than this number is still under the rubble by our weapons. All hospitals in Gaza have been bombed and rendered non-functional. All the civilian infrastructure have been destroyed. Israel is launching a war and a genocide on the Palestinian people, not against Hamas. Their goal is annihilating the whole population of Palestine. They already explicitly and publicly said that this is their intention. The chain of command mentioned this, all their leaders mentioned this, their journalists mentioned this, their public is in majority in favor of this. They are committing a war of genocide. It's not against men, it's against the whole people. This criminal regime in Israel is, and its armed gangs and militias, supported and funded by the United States of America, is intent on destroying the whole population of Palestine. Every passing day sees more lives lost, more children murdered, more families torn apart by an active genocide and mass destruction. We must stand against the imposed famine and starvation and the annihilation of the old people of Gaza. As members of the medical community, we are bound by our oath and moral obligation to protect the sanctity of life, all life, every life, and advocate against the loss of any human life under any circumstances. Crimes do not justify more crimes. We cannot afford to be on the wrong side of history or be complicit in genocide. The call for action is urgent and immediate. This is not a matter of politics or taking sides based on your ethnicity or nationality or religion. This is a moral imperative that transcends all boundaries and demands our collective action. The scenes of mass murder and slaughter of innocent children, babies, women, mothers in Gaza have global ramifications. It's impacting the psyche and the mental being, mental well-being- Mental well-being of the humanity worldwide. We're all distressed. We're all stressed out. We're all depressed by what we're seeing. Our children are exposed to these scenes of children being blown to pieces by these bombs, the American bombs, the 2,000-pound pumps that are given to Israel by free, by Joe Biden, Genocide Joe, to murder babies, not to act in wars.
Thank you, sir.
I need more time, please.
No, sir.
When it comes to...
Sir, your time is... Sir? Everyone has five minutes. Sir, you are out of order. Sir? We're in recess.
You can be in chambers, please. And you're not in line to speak, please be seated. Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Hi, my name is Dana, and I'm a resident and community member of Farmington Hills. As a Palestinian living outside of my home country, these past seven months have been nothing but grief, fear, pain, and anger. Grief for all the innocent mothers, fathers, and children we've lost to massacres; fear for my own family living in Palestine; pain because it's been seven months and the genocide still hasn't ended; and anger towards those who have the ability to stop it but decide not to. There was originally a proclamation for a ceasefire that had just been removed. Whether it was removed or not, and whether it existed in the first place or not, the whole community feels that it wouldn't have been enough in the first place. All these meetings we've decided to come to and all these speeches we've given were always towards a ceasefire resolution. A ceasefire resolution is what we want, and a ceasefire resolution is what we're going to keep asking for until we eventually get it. It hurts so much knowing my brothers and sisters in Gaza and in the West Bank are struggling to have even the littlest of things; knowing that innocent children, mothers, and fathers are being assaulted, taken away, bombed, and starved every minute that passes. The city of Rafah in Gaza, where over 2 million people were told to evacuate to because it was considered safe, has been bombed mercilessly over this past week. It has been more than seven months of this brutal genocide. And there are now officially over 35,000 deaths and over tens of thousands of people injured and missing under all the rubble. Calling for a ceasefire as a city council is not going to end the genocide on the spot. We all understand that, but it's the first, it's the right first step towards peace. Peace, just like everyone wants. May 15 marks 76 years since the Nakbe, since over 700,000 Palestinians were expelled from their own homes and erased from their own cities in 1948. After 76 years that Palestine has been under occupation and suffered multiple genocides, the Palestinian people are experiencing once another genocide in front of our own eyes. However, I never imagined that it would get to the point where there are countless protests all over the world and to the point where everyone finally opens up their eyes to the situation that's been happening for so long. Although as Palestinians are disappointed that it's taken this long for everyone to realize what the right side of history is, we are also incredibly grateful that we finally have a lot of the world on our side. While the rest of the world heads towards the right direction and continues to fight alongside us, I hope that you, city council members, also stick with humanity and choose to head towards the right direction, which is a ceasefire resolution and a free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You were clapping. You're out of order. This is not a room for prayer, no. No. Okay. Ma'am, this is public comment. If you would like to comment, you're welcome to get in line. You are out of order.
My name is Nina Jamadadeen, and I'm seven years old. I live in Farmington. I want to talk about the sad things happening in Gaza. In Gaza, kids like me can't play safely. They hear scary noises and see their homes and school, and school's broken. Many don't have enough food and clean water. Every child deserves to feel safe and go to school without fear. We need to stop fighting now. Please make, make peace in Gaza so kids can be safe again.
Thank you. Seriously. For the folks on TV, we have people persisting and clapping, and no waving of flags. That was outside the room. I beg your pardon. Okay. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Hi, my name is Yasmeen. I am a born and raised U.S. citizen, resident of Dearborn. So today I stand before you, asking you, why do you continue to wait to call for a ceasefire? While there are innocent children, mothers, and fathers dying, over approximately 34,622 people have died, innocent lives have died. However, I am 100% sure that number is not accurate, and I'm pretty sure it's above that number, because now we have limbs flying because of the tons of bombs, which are U.S.-funded, by the way, that are obliterating the bodies into thousands of pieces. There have been over seven mass graves found in the hospital yards. All the hospitals have been bombed. Every university has been bombed. Every school, children's school, has been bombed. The tents where the residents are staying have been bombed. There's no safe place for them to flee. Everybody told them first, go down to the south. They went down to the south. Then they said, keep going. There's nowhere safe for them to go. Now that they're in the south, they're bombing the south. They have it lined up where they literally can't go anywhere. The Rafah border is closed. By the way, as an RN in America, I'd like to say how truly disappointed I am that the U.S. government here doesn't care about its citizens. The U.S. nurses, American nurses, are in Gaza right now. They're in Gaza right now. They're stuck because Israelis have blocked the border. This is nothing new, and this has been happening for over 75 years. This is not, this did not start October 7. This did not start October 7, 2023. This started 1948, when Israel stole the land of Palestine and called it Israel. Each of you will try to deny it, but it's the truth. 1948, it has been 76 years. Over millions of people have been displaced. Innocent people, families, just like yours, children, just like yours, mothers, just like yours, fathers, just like yours, have been killed, have been murdered, have been, their homes have been stolen from them. Why can an Israeli go into a house and walk into a house and say, this is mine now? And the police, Israeli police, the terrorist IDF, go and defend them and say, get out, with guns to their heads? Why is that okay? Why is it that the U.S. government is defending this and funding this? Why haven't you guys called for a ceasefire? This is not because of Hamas. Hamas is not the reason for this. They did this in 1948, and they continue to do this in 2024. Why is this still happening? 76 years, and the U.S. government is still funding this. This is absolutely insane. America's going to go down in history as being on the wrong side of history. We've seen Hitler do it, and we've said, never again. What does never again mean? Never again means never again for everyone. Okay, this doesn't mean anything about religion. They've been killing innocent Jews in Israel who are against this. They've been literally violating them and assaulting them in the streets. Anybody, anyone that says, free Palestine, in the streets of Israel will get arrested. It's as easy as that. It's literally, there's, like, the evidence is in our phones. We're living in 2024, everything is in our phones. You don't have to open CNN or the TV to watch the, click the remote to turn on something to watch the truth. Everything is in your phones. And if you were to actually try to find the truth, the truth is here. We're all standing before you, telling you what the truth is, giving you guys numbers, but you guys refuse to listen. The U.S. government refuses to listen to our words. They refuse to listen to the American citizens, the ones who are born and raised here. The ones who are, our tax dollars are funding this genocide. We don't want our money funding genocide. We don't want our money killing innocent children, children just like ours, just like yours, just like mine. It's a shame that America is a part of this. And one day, we will lift to see that the students protesting today will go, will literally be in the history books, just like in the Vietnam War. America was on the wrong side of history then, and it's on the wrong side of history now. We ask you guys, call for a ceasefire today. Call for a ceasefire, all of you. This is not about, this is about humanity. This is not about race, religion, ethnicity, nothing about that. Like I said, they're bombing hospitals, they're bombing schools, they're bombing churches, they're bombing mosques, they're literally killing everybody. They don't care. They don't care who you are, what you are. Anybody that says the word Palestine, that's it, you're arrested, you're dead. And if this was about the hostages, Hamas agreed to give the hostages back multiple times. And when they agreed to give the hostages back, Israel said no. And guess what? They bombed Gaza again. And guess what? They killed the hostages. Israeli terrorists killed their own hostages, their own citizens. They murdered them, slaughtered them.
Thank you. Hands down, please. Good evening. Your name, please, the city you live in.
My name is Mike Auditella, and I live in Canton Township. I'm going to start off a little bit different here with an old Jewish joke. The situation we found ourselves in regards to the Zionists, it is impossible not to be reminded of the classic Jewish joke about the Jewish mother in Russia taking leave of her son, who has been called up to serve the czar in the war against Turkey. The mother explained, don't overexert yourself, she tells, she implores her son. Kill a Turk and rest. Kill another Turk and rest again. But, mother, the son interrupts, what if the Turk kills me? You, she explains, horrified the mother, but why? What have you done to him? That is the situation. None of this started for me and for my family on October 7. My grandfather fought the British in World War I. My wife's family were made homeless refugees in 1948. My father-in-law died a refugee in 2014. I myself, I came here when I was eight years old. There was a gentleman here, and I think his name was Murray, talking about American education system. I'm a product of your education system. I went through public schools. I went through college. I pledged allegiance to the flag as a kid. When you raised the flag, we were made to pledge allegiance. All right? I am an American, more so than anybody else in this room. Doesn't make me less American to stand up for justice. In fact, it makes me more American to stand up for what's right. But when he comes in here, and when I came here in 1969 after the '67 war, I was there as a six-year-old. We fled our homes, and you can roll your eyes, Mayor, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate the respect. When I was in '67, we fled our homes. I was six years old. We ran for the hills. We hid in a cave. And while inside that cave, and it was a full moon, full-lit moon, the moon was full, it was lit, the whole area was lit. We stayed there, 20 of us. My nephew was four days old. We saw a jet circle overhead, an Israeli jet. My mother got spooked, and she got scared, and she yanked us out. She told us to leave. And we ran, we hid under an olive grove. Within five seconds, the Israeli jet fired a missile to the mouth of that cave and blew it to smithereens. We were women and children. In 2003, I took my kids back home to Palestine, and I took them up to the mountain, and I took them up to the cave and showed them where I was, where I hid as a six-year-old. Now my great-grandchildren, I took back there, and I showed them the exact cave where we were hiding two years ago in Palestine. And now they see what's going on, and they say, grandpa, I have five grandkids, you know, born in America, born and raised, why are they doing this? Why is it okay? Why doesn't the government do something? Why can't they stop it? And again, I'm a product of your education system. The Holocaust museum that you have here, where it says, never again, I've been there more than one occasion. I've taken kids, Muslim kids, through that museum, where the Jewish gentleman tried to say, oh, antisemitism, and they hate us and they hate our Western way of life. They, we hate hypocrisy, not the Western way of life. If you're going to talk the talk, you got to walk the talk, and you can't have it both ways. You can't preach something for one group of people and not for both. That's the height of hypocrisy. I've been there. I've been to the Holocaust museum. I have Jewish friends. I've been to many. It has nothing to do with religion. It has a lot to do with the people that want a land without the people in it. They want to cleanse the land like they did in 1948. 750,000 people were made homeless. The villages were reduced to dust. They were erased, and in their place, they planted pine trees imported from Europe, so it covers everything and nothing can be seen. So none of this started October 7. It's my family, we fought against the British, and World War I. My grandfather was injured fighting the British. A lot more uncommon than Americans fighting the British, right? So the minimum we're asking for, we're not asking you to go out on a limb and do anything outrageous, but call for a ceasefire. It's symbolic, yes, but it sends a message that we will not be complicit in this genocide, that we say, never again for anybody, period, no matter who they are. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Sreeeladatta. I'm a longtime resident of Farmington Hills, and I've been here before twice to support the call for a ceasefire resolution. Yeah, I'd like to spell my name because I think last time it was not noted. It's S-R-E-E-L-A-D-A-T-T-A. And this time, I'm also representing Code Pink Women for Peace. And first of all, I would like to thank Councilwoman Bulware and Mayor Rich for bringing, for creating a proclamation and putting it on the agenda. At the least, it indicates that you have been listening to people who've been speaking here for, to whatever extent. I like the fact that you use the word peace. I actually did study the proclamation, and I don't understand why other council members think that there was anything controversial in it. It says, we stand in solidarity with innocent Palestinians, Israelis, and the residents of Gaza. Standing in solidarity with ordinary people? Controversial in Farmington Hills? I'm very disappointed that it was withdrawn from the agenda and people wanted to never be brought up again? Why? If you think it should be a resolution, then bring a resolution. I understand that many people maybe didn't have time to read it because I think it was posted today. But yeah, please do bring it up. And as much as I appreciate the fact that you did bring, put a proclamation on the agenda, there was a glaring hole in the proclamation. It was missing any mention of the relentless killing of civilians. It said, we stand for the safe release of hostages, provision of unfettered humanitarian aid, and not one word about the thousands, tens of thousands civilians being killed. Even our Secretary of State, Antony Blinken, yesterday said that what's happening in Gaza is a horrible loss of life of innocent civilians. He said that the Israeli forces should get out of Gaza. So as much as I appreciate the first step you've taken, I really expect a lot more from you. And especially, I'm just flabbergasted by the other council members, and I know I'm repeating myself, but you thought that this was just controversial to just call for peace, empathy, solidarity with people? This does not make me feel welcome here, as if I belong here, frankly, because, and some of you said that it's not the city council's job to comment on international affairs. But in March 2022, the same city council made a proclamation of solidarity with the people of Ukraine. That was not controversial. Why? I mean, you know, and the proclamation condemns Islamophobia, antisemitism, and that's great. These are all forms of racism. And just looking at, you know, the difference between Ukraine and Palestine, I know, to me, it just smacks of racism, frankly. Yeah, so, and your proclamation also called for constructive dialogue, and it would be great to have, but before that, we must agree on the facts. I mean, there's a total mismatch in scale between the languages in the proclamation and the reality of the enormous, yes, genocide happening in Palestine, because a lot of international organizations and the International Court of Justice have called it a plausible genocide. Thank you for listening to me, hoping to
Thank you.
Hoping for more from you. Thank you.
I'm going to have to, so for the people on TV, I'm addressing one of the members of the audience, I'm going to have to ask you to please stop speaking while others are speaking. Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
I live in Farmington Hills, and my name is Jenna. So at this point, I think you might be a little bit bored at the city council meeting because you do keep pointing out things that nobody else is distracted by, like my mom, that's, that's the one who's speaking. I wasn't, my hearing wasn't impaired at all when she spoke. In fact, I think she brought up some pretty important points. Maybe you should give her a little bit more than five minutes, since she didn't get to talk last time because she was escorted out. So to begin, I would like to say, or ask you a question, I don't know, since it is our public comment, if you're able to answer, but you could nod your head. Do you enjoy watching this genocide? Any of you? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. So if you don't, then why can't you pass a resolution? It seems like a thing to do when you disagree with something, you might want to speak out against it. You're, so you're, you're never wrong when you do the right thing, if you believe it in your heart. So I believe all of you guys' heart is in the right place because I would like to believe that, because it's something that I would like to see in the people who lead my town. So I hope that you can find it in your hearts to pass a resolution. At least this proclamation that you wrote up, it shows that you have listened, but I would really like if you could have some backbone and pass it. A speaker earlier, I believe he was pro-Israeli, he called me and many other Palestinian, who support an end to the genocide, part of a mafia. I feel personally attacked by that. I support Palestine, and he, I feel like he called me a killer. It doesn't make me a killer. It doesn't make me support killing other people, killing based on racism, prejudice. It doesn't make that something that I believe in, but I feel as if you let that pass, but us talking to the city council members is a personal attack when he called me and many others in this room mafia members? That doesn't seem right to me. He pointed out that the students in the encampment were supporting Hamas, but he supports the killing of children if he, if he supports Israel, because Israel is killing children currently. So I don't think the previous speaker would, would be mad if there was Israelis camping in the University of Michigan. It is free speech, so I don't think that should be a point that should be brought up. I feel like there's a negative perspective that you guys harbor toward the individuals in this room. We don't want to be here. We don't want to scream and yell and shout and be belligerent or aggressive. We want to sit down and have a civil conversation and hear our voices heard and have a resolution. Because at the end of the day, what's important to us is, we want, all of us, the signs, they say, end the occupation. We don't say, argue with Mayor Rich. It's not what it says. We don't, we're not enjoying coming here. It's very late at night. It's 9:41, and I have school tomorrow, so I'm hoping we can wrap this up because I'm tired. So he did mention that our school systems are being bankrolled by foreign money, and there's a negative perspective on the USA in our schools. Maybe that's because they enslaved Africans-Americans, African, sorry, African-Americans to build the country, and to begin with the country, they committed a genocide against the Native American people. And I believe that's an important perspective, however negative it may be, that needs to be told in the American public schools. So you guys are a city council, correct? You guys, I hope you don't take offense that I say you guys are a pretty small city council because Farmington Hills isn't that big. But the UN Security Council, which is a much larger council, called for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, so I believe you are able to do the same. You, in the proclamation, you said that this is a domestic affair, that you recognize that it hits at home in Farmington Hills. So I don't understand how you find the proclamation controversial as it appealed to both sides. So as I have 10 minutes, or 10 seconds left on the clock, I would like to say, free Palestine, from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Good evening. My name is Mandy Sullivan. I live in Farmington Hills. I know you guys get a lot of life stories. I'm just going to add mine to the pile. My family and I moved here last fall. Previously, we owned a home in a small city that was very promising, and we were very hopeful about our futures there. There was unparalleled citizen involvement. There were dozens of active block clubs that had been in existence for decades. There was lots of development in the bordering cities, and a lot, it bode well for our future. There were countless historic homes. We, all in all, we felt like we had chosen wisely for an up-and-coming place to root our family's resources and energy. But after only four years, we left, and the deciding factor was, in fact, the city council. After four years of weekly participation in block clubs and council meetings, after starting a small business and hosting block parties, after park cleanups and looking after elderly neighbors, we made the heartbreaking decision to leave. We're happy we're here now, though. It worked out for the good. But it became clear that no matter how much effort we had put in as citizens, the pattern of the city council was going to undermine the efforts of the citizens. And the city itself is tens of millions of dollars of debt. Many of the citizens are leaving, and a lot of this was due to the patterns that had been established in the city council. And I just want to encourage you at this choice point that you are at as a governing body, to really consider the precedents that are being set in what seem symbolic and small as decisions actually have huge weight. And it's not really about the outcome of the decision as much as the quality of the decisions that are made. I really support having this proclamation taken off the agenda today, and I don't believe it has a place coming back on an agenda in the future. I understand, wanting to be inclusive, I understand the value behind the proclamation, but I don't think it has a place here. And I really want to encourage you, as you've been holding firm for many weeks, to continue to hold to the standard and the proper boundaries as the governing body for our local government. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name and the city you live in, please.
Hi there. My name is Haley, and I'm from Huntington Woods, Michigan. I'm a very proud anti-Zionist Jew. I grew up Jewish. I grew up going to a temple not that far from here. I have met Holocaust survivors. I have spoken to Holocaust survivors, and I think it's really disgusting that you won't call for a ceasefire. And I think it's disgusting because that means that 6 million Jews had a genocide committed against them for nothing, for nothing. Because now there's another genocide against the Palestinian people, and you won't say anything, not one thing. I was there when Lansing called for a ceasefire. I spoke at the city council meeting, and they were proud. They were proud to call for a ceasefire. they were proud, they were proud to call for a ceasefire. It took a lot of work, but they were proud to call for a ceasefire. It's not, as a Jewish person, I would love to say to you, it's not antisemitic. There is nothing antisemitic about supporting the Palestinian people. Because Judaism and Zionism are two completely different things. Zionism is not the Jewish determination to live, it's a colonial nationalist state. Because why should the Palestinian people have had to pay for an antisemitic Europe and an antisemitic America 75 years ago? It makes no sense. They had culture there, they had families, and then they were displaced, they were murdered. They have been being murdered, and now suddenly because we can all be on our phones, we can see it happening in real time, and finally, people are starting to speak up about it. So, I implore you, as a human, as a person, as somebody who hopefully likes Jewish people, to stand up for the Palestinian people. To stand up, please, call for a ceasefire. It's important. You guys say in Ukraine, what's happening is devastating, when there's a full-blown genocide, not war, because by no means can the Palestinian people fight back against the carpet bombing, against the displacement. They don't have that, they don't have that luxury. It's a genocide. There's a genocide happening before our eyes, and I know that you're a small town in Michigan, I know that I'm not even from here, but just that little action can do so much. The city council meeting in Lansing was the first real thing I went out to, but after that, I joined an organization called Jewish Voice for Peace, they're an anti-Zionist Jewish organization. They, the, I, I joined the MSU chapter because I was a student at MSU, and the New York chapter, they held protests in front of the Statue of Liberty. They're doing real work to say that Judaism and Zionism are two different things, to stand up for the Palestinian people's right to exist. Because Zionism is against Palestinian people, and why are we as humans being against other humans? It makes absolutely no sense. Why are people dying? It makes no sense. Please, please, the symbolism in it, the weight that you hold, call for a ceasefire. As a Jewish person, I am telling you right now, call for a ceasefire as a young person in this country who is ready and able and willing to make change, I am begging you, call for a ceasefire. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Stella Krizziak, I do not live here, I live in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. And as an outsider of Farmington Hills, I can see that you guys are not listening to the people of your city. I can see that they've been here and they've been begging you guys to listen to them, and isn't that your job, to listen to them? I, I, I don't know, like, this, this what's happening right now is not democracy, you're not representing the people of your city, and you might think that passing the ceasefire can't do anything from like Farmington Hills, but it would make the people of your city feel safer and feel like you guys are actually rooting for them rather than being complicit in the murder of people. This is about compassion. My father taught me about compassion since I was little, and I'm sorry that your parents didn't do the same, but like, looking through the lens of compassion, I can see that like, this is, it's murder, it's genocide, it's not war, it's genocide. People are dying for no reason other than to die, there are no reason for the women, the children, the fathers, the grandparents, the doctors, the teachers, everyone to die, there is no reason for it to happen. Palestinians can't fight back. It is, it is blatant genocide. Yeah, I urge you to represent the people of your city and listen to them, and at the very least, pass the call for genocide, I mean, call for ceasefire. I don't know, yeah, it's, you guys aren't listening to your people.
Thank you. Good evening, your name and the city you live in, please.
Yes, my name is Eric Shelley, I'm a Southfield resident and from Danil's parishioner. And I wanted to speak to you from a place of gratitude, but right now, I feel like I've been stabbed in the back. But, but I, I do have gratitude, I have gratitude for activists who've come here, week after week, to the leadership they've shown. I'm really proud of you. You've created a crisis. And it's because you've created a crisis that Mayor Rich has been forced to act. And the resolution that we thought we were gonna hear today was such a meager act, and you would not, you would not yield an inch. So disappointing. But I am also grateful for the leadership of Mayor Pretend Bridges, and it just now occurs to me, the name Bridges, because you were a bridge between many of the residents and council. Pastor Milford brought to you a proposal that you mirror the Ukrainian proclamation that you, that was given by this council in 2022. And he, he's not the first to think of it, but because there was a crisis, it was more palatable, it seems like a, a, a good way out. But even then, that proposal was set aside. Me and some of the Farmington Hills residents went and workshopped that and tried to make it as palatable as possible to everyone here. We weren't asking for anything, that you didn't offer the Ukrainians. Just simple humanity, that you don't want to see innocent people die. So, how do we square this circle? That the city of Farmington Hills doesn't want to see Ukrainians die, but could care less if Palestinians died by the tens of thousands? How is that possible? How do we square that? Well, I have a modest proposal. Either you adopt the proclamation that we offered, go back and look at it, it's very reasonable, I think you'll find, just says that we don't want to see innocent people murdered, a genocide carried out before us. You can do that, or you can go back and rescind the Ukrainian proclamation and tell the Ukrainians to go to hell, because you can't have both. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
Hi, good evening, my name is Iman Ismail, I'm from West Bloomfield. I came here before, as I mentioned, I was in Gaza in April, back in April, and I witnessed the situation in Gaza. I'm here again today, I'm very disappointed, I have to make it clear again, that the situation in Gaza now, we reached a point that it's a pure humanitarian crisis. This is not a political issue, this is not about religion, this is not about Hamas anymore, this is only a humanitarian crisis, a catastrophe. It's something that, it's beyond what you can describe with words. What I witnessed in Gaza is horrific, it's something that I can't even forget. Every day I wake up remembering the children wandering and running in the European hospital barefoot, doing nothing, no schools, no education. All what they see is blood, trauma, airstrikes, running from one place to another, remembering the women suffering, remembering the patients that I was able to see in the ER, all of them had hepatitis A infection. Every single patient I saw in the European hospital emergency room had jaundice, the yellowish discoloration of the skin. I swear to God, every single patient I saw had hepatitis A infection. It doesn't matter, a woman, man, child, a child, this is, other than the trauma injuries, hepatitis A infection is widely spread. Chickenpox was diagnosed in Gaza. I don't know if you can imagine, chickenpox. We saw rashes, we had an infectious disease doctor on the team with us, we were able to diagnose that it was chickenpox, spread in Gaza, other different rashes that we were not able to identify. It's a huge disaster, it's a complete destruction. The IDF has killed humanity in Gaza, had killed all forms of humanity. Airstrikes, bombings, day and night, day and night, every day, if you hear the airstrikes, you're not gonna be able to survive after that. It's scary. I had to wake up every, sometimes in the middle of the night screaming, because this was the first time for me, I'm originally from Gaza, but I never lived in Gaza. The first time for me to hear it, and it was horrific, horrific. I woke up in the middle of the night screaming, looking for help, just to help me, I'm here, I'm, I was there to help them and I needed someone to help me. I wish that one day you guys can go to Gaza and see the situation, because you're gonna change your mind, regardless of your decision, your decision only represents your humanity level. But I want to tell you that now, we reached a point, when I was there in Gaza, unfortunately, I was telling them, the US government is never gonna allow the IDF to invade Rafah. There is no way that this will happen. I am telling you that this will never happen, we're doing protesting, we're doing all what we can, we have people there who are with us, Jewish people, white people, African Americans, all ethnic, all people from different backgrounds, that Rafah invasion will never happen, and look at what we, where we are now. They invaded Rafah. I don't know if you saw on the news, the IDF soldiers, they stepped on the Gaza sign in the border with the tanks, when they are, they were laughing, stepping on it, destroying it completely on the ground. And the Rafah border, if you don't know, is only pure Palestinian Egyptian Rafah border, it has nothing to do with Israel, they have nothing to do with that border. It's a pure Palestinian Egyptian border. Now, they occupied it again, they removed the Palestinian flag and they put the Israeli flag. This is a new barbarian occupation, a new occupation, just happened a couple of days ago. Now, also, we have 20 medical professionals from the US, they are trapped with the other 2 million people who are trapped in Gaza. The situation there is horrible, it's, it's, it's a, it's a complete disaster, I cannot even, I just come here to, to let you know that it's, it's a disaster. If there's anything in your power that you're not using, you are responsible for this. We are, every single human being is responsible for what's happening. And I want to say one last thing, because we had Jewish people with us, there was an orthopedic Jewish doctor with us who cried every day about the situation. I swear to God, if this situation is happening anywhere in the world, even in, in, in Israel, if 2 million people are trapped without water, without electricity, bombing every day, without hospitals, complete destruction of the hospital system, there's no hospitals operating in Gaza, the European is not even fully operating. We, you will see us here, asking for ceasefire and asking for this to stop, because we stand with humanity, we don't stand with oppression, and we don't stand with, you know, occupation, and it doesn't matter if you are Jewish, Christian, Muslims, we are all human beings and we're only calling the human being in you. If there's anything you can do-
Thank you. You have one five-minute set. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Darcy Scott, I live in Farmington Hills, been a resident most of my life. So, I have two things I'll tie to get really quickly through. The first one, as addressed, was the Caustic Center. I barely heard you talk about what the Caustic Center was and that you've received some notices, again, the noise was a little loud, so I could not hear that. But I'm gonna put this out there for anything that you might be considering, if you are part of the 50 and better, I would invite you to come in the 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock or in the evening at 6:00. I've had two herniated discs, and the Caustic Center pool, I used to work out at the Hock, the difference in the Caustic Center pool is very warm, and the graduated pool, so someone who's tall can stand in the deep and someone who's short can stand, whereas the Hock, it is, because it's zero entry and it's like, the shallow is this high, it's not a great workout, but it is also freezing, like someone already mentioned, but I've invited friends from Novi, West Bloomfield, Southfield, they've invited friends, they've invited neighbors, they've invited mother-in-laws. So, I just want you to have that as an option, there was a lot of the senior population that was 50 and better, I don't think we're all seniors, but they are an amazing group of people that I want to aspire to be like, because I want to live in a healthy mind and body. So, if I can be exercising every day, it's the only thing that works, I, I can't do those things on land. But our instructor, who was here at one time, she had, she's had two hip surgeries, she broke her shoulder and a rotator cuff she tore, and she was back in the pool, leading us and instructing us because of her regimen that she's been doing for so long, she was able to heal quicker and be back sooner. So, I just want to put my plug in that when you are changing up the things of what you're gonna put on the table, the pool is essential, and with Rose Community going forward, 200 residents are, we're already at capacity in the Caustic Center and we can't go to the Hock to make overload on that, but just to put that as a consideration, because, please come, if you're in the 50 and Better Club, come, it's amazing and you feel better and it's great, but if you take the pool away, I have been to the Hock, I can't do the Hock and I can't do the, with the Y either, but anyway. So, my other, all right, so I have half an hour more to do, half my time. I am also, gonna change hats right now, I am on the Steering Committee for the Interfaith Council, for Farmington Area Interfaith Association. I understand the hurt and the, the issues that are happening, that we, as city of Farmington Hills, we have an amazing diverse group of people. We have a great amount of people who are faith-based, and for us to come together, no matter what side you want to take, that is happening overseas, when we have our own pain, we can't see the pain for other people, I, I want to call out, I, I know we're not directing anything but to you, but we, as the city of Farmington Hills, as the Farmington Interfaith, the schools, the nonprofits, whatever we can do together to build unity, I think that is the call to action, whether we're serving together, getting to know people who are of other faiths, of other beliefs and other religions, that we have an opportunity to sit down, invite someone. The call to action is to learn about and appreciate a different person that might be, and I'm not preaching to the choir, I mean, I am preaching to the choir, I know. I just want to make sure that we stand linked, 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 side by side, in ways that we can look to help and serve each other. In a way, I gave the example of having a kidney stone, and because of the pain that I was in in the emergency room, I could not see the other people's pain. So, as the city of Farmington Hills and as the leadership, we can all link with arms, all united to help others, and when you're out of that pain, you can reach out, we can have a, a place of understanding. So, I just encourage, that's what we continue to do, and I, I know what you're doing is hard, but I think that we, as Farmington Hills, has a great diversity and I love it for that reason, and I will just continue to keep everyone in my prayers, that's, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Farrah Khan, and I'm Farmington's Hill City resident. Good evening and peace be upon you all. I stand before you with a very heavy heart and a profound sense of betrayal. Our city council, the very individuals, we elected to represent us, have removed the proclamation calling for peace from their agenda. For six long months, we have tirelessly and consistently urged our city council to take a stand for peace, yet our pleas have fallen on deaf ears. How can this be justified? How can it be that half a year of unwavering demand for peace and a sudden appearance of a fraction of the community or their emails result in the dismissal of our course? Now, this is what I truly call controversial. Where is the council's dignity and honor? How can you turn a blind eye to the heinous and brutal genocide that has claimed the lives of over 40,000 people? How can you ignore the horrific deaths of more than 15,000 defenseless children? This decision, this decision is not only a betrayal of our trust, but also a division of our community. By refusing to support peace, the council is driving a wedge between us, fostering discord and disunity. It is an abdication of their moral responsibility and a failure to uphold the values they were, they were elected to represent. If the unimaginable suffering and loss of tens of thousands of lives have not moved your hearts, I fear my words will not have any effect or little effect on our council. It is, it is a shameful day when our calls for peace are silenced and the voices of the suffering are ignored. We must understand- We must understand, I hope our council does that too, while our cities' call for a ceasefire may not immediately halt this brutal genocide, it'll show that we stand with humanity, it will demonstrate that we choose life over death, and peace over oppression, war crimes and atrocities. Failing to support peace will only reveal our moral bankruptcy. We must hold our council accountable, we must demand that they reclaim their dignity and honor, and they stand with us in the pursuit of peace. If they do not, the stain of this betrayal will, will be theirs to bear. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
Good evening, my name is Rania Masri, and I live here in Farmington Hills. I've met with all of you, almost all of you before, we've come here week after week. We have shown our faces to be a diverse group of people. We consistently show up, Muslims, Christians, Jews, pastors, priests, rabbis, imams, consistently, diversity. All you can see is diverse faces. You don't see a block of people who show up to a special meeting and pressure you, and show up to the meeting today, that are one block with one interest. They do not represent this community. We are a diverse group of people. When you look around at our faces, you see diverse people. But then, when you speak, you speak about Muslims and Arabs, you make it a Muslim or Arab issue. When you talk about people who are opposing ceasefire, you say that they're Jewish people. It's so black and white, it's so disconcerting, that we can't get past this, and see that the majority of Americans, the majority of Christians, the majority of Jews, the majority of Muslims, and the majority of the world, is all looking at what's happening in horror and calling for ceasefire. We have the entire world voting as a voting bloc for ceasefire, for peace, and we have America among nine countries that it pressures financially, that stand there and say, no, I'm sorry, ceasefire is controversial, we can't call for peace. We called for peace when it came to the Ukrainians, of course, but that was different. But I would love for one of you to explain how that was different. I would love for you to say why that was okay, and this isn't. Because, do you want to come out and say it wasn't okay, we shouldn't have called for peace? We should have called for the slaughter of the Ukrainians? What did we see when we saw the Ukrainians fleeing their homes, being slaughtered and killed, being terrified for their lives? We were all humans, we were empathetic, we saw that, and we couldn't believe it. That's what we do as human beings, when we see oppression, when we see genocide, when we see killings. We see that they're human, and we can't take it. We all stand up, Christian, Jewish, Muslim, Black, Indian, Pakistani, Arab, Liberian, Greek, you've seen people from every country represented here. And then you continuously paint it with a broad brush and say, oh, well, we let Muslim women swim in swimming pools. It's like, you don't see what's in front of you, this is your community. Councilmember Randy Bruce, you said you got a bunch of emails from people who don't live here? Please say that with a straight face to me, because you have seen us here week after week, are we flying in from other countries? We are American residents right here in Farmington Hills, and we are speaking our truth, and you are not listening to your own community. Who is this block that you're listening to? Is it the diverse faces that you see here? Because I think all you can see is the kaffiyah that we wear, and you think that we are all some foreigners that don't understand American systems. We don't understand how politics works here. We are proud Americans. When we see injustice, we stand up for injustice, whether it's for Black rights, or Latino rights, or people from all walks of life, all around the world, and this is not an issue far away. I would like you to look at the residents here that have family members that have lost limbs, fathers who have had to amputate their children's limbs, babies that were buried under rubble crying until they died. Look at all the family members here of those children that have died, and those family members, 70, 50 family members, everyone has crazy numbers. Look at them and say, you as residents don't matter. Because there were a few residents who pressured us, and we had it on the agenda, and we were ready to say something that matters, but we just saw that pressure, and we backed away because we couldn't take the pressure. Well, it's not easy to do the right thing, it never is. You don't always get applause when you stand up for truth and justice, you don't. A lot of us, when we stand up for truth and justice, we are putting our families on the line, we're putting our livelihood on the line, and we're doing it because it's the right thing to do. And it's not just us that need to do that, because this is how it is now. You do the wrong thing, you get voted out, in Farmington Hills, and at the top of the level of this government, and you'll see Biden get voted out.
Thank you. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Evening, Mayor Rich, distinguished member, council members. My name is Dr. Motaz Ibrahim. I'm a former Farmington Hills resident currently residing in Sterling Heights. I'm a neurologist by trade, and today's day 220 of this conflict, 220 days, and basically, Israel has created a medical apocalypse in Gaza. Thirty-six hospitals, only six functional left, partially functional, not even functional, not a single pharmacy is available there. Like, Councilman Dwyer, imagine you can't get your medications from the pharmacy. Insulin, nothing, nothing is there. People have died from diabetic comas because they can't get their insulin. In the United States, there's 6,192 hospitals. By that ratio, that means in seven months, we've lost 400, 4,200 American hospitals. I want you to imagine that, guys. Imagine this apocalyptic thing happening to this great United States. 628 healthcare workers dead, doctors, nurses, ambulance drivers, they're shooting at ambulances. Forty-six ambulances, who would shoot at an ambulance? There was an ambulance that was delivered by the state of Kuwait, it was functional for 24 hours, they shot it the very next day. Lady's going to deliver on donkeys and cart, because there's no ambulance to take it during labor. I want you, I mean, I know your mothers here on the council, imagine being driven on a donkey to go get delivered at a doctor, and not even the donkey, because sometimes they targeted donkeys, I've seen that video myself. I don't know, I don't know what to say anymore. This is a human catastrophe that we've never seen in modern times, this is 2024. How is the world letting this happen so far? There's one toilet for every 480 Gazans, one shower for every 1,000 Gazans. Imagine you're sharing a shower with 1,000 people, how's that shower gonna feel like? People go to the scene to clean themselves. Women don't have feminine hygiene products, nothing. They, when doctors there want to sanitize, they use vinegar to sanitize it, vinegar. There's no anesthetics. I've seen amputations done with no anesthetics. I want you to see this, I would like you to go on, please watch Al Jazeera, or please just don't watch the CNN or Fox News or anything like that, go on Al Jazeera for two days. I want you to see that things with your own eyes, this has been caught in 4K, in real time, we're seeing this happen. If you don't have Al Jazeera, one of your kids can show you on TikTok or Instagram these videos. This weekend, enjoy it, please. For 220 days, I've been suffering and watching this disgusting behavior. No matter how much the United States, our rules of engagement, we've never did that to hospitals, we've never did that to doctors, we've never did that to healthcare workers. There was a doctor once that was taken by the IDF, or Israeli terrorist forces, put on a leash, they had to make him walk on all fours and eat out of plate on the floor like a dog. That's a doctor. I'm a doctor. Can you imagine the humiliation? I would rather die than be humiliated that way. So please, it's not complicated. Ceasefire, that's just, it's, there's nothing, it's the most logical thing to, for you guys to do. There's absolutely nothing, nothing wrong with this. This is what humanity is doing. The whole world is looking for, is asking for a ceasefire right now. Don't be, don't be, don't, don't be left behind, just ask for a ceasefire, because that's the right thing to do. You look like a good bunch of people, I don't think you're bigots, you look like, you look like normal people, like people I would, I treat in my office every day. And I know you're decent people on the inside, that's just a decent thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in. Bring the microphone down so you, we can hear you.
My name is Adam, and I live in Farmington Hills. My school is Farmington Steam Academy, and I just wanted to discuss with you about not passing a ceasefire. So basically, when you're doing for, like, all, all of these other countries, you just, oh, let me do this, oh, let me do this, this is not considered, you don't consider anything, you just do it. But for this, for passing a ceasefire for Palestine, no, that's just way too hard, you just can't do it. And I just want to know the answer of why you can't do that, because, how it takes so long if you do it for all the other countries.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
Hello, my name is Claire Romanchuk. I am a voting resident of Farmington Hills and a Ukrainian-American, and I am here today to ask the council to, to pass a ceasefire resolution. I am here to echo the sentiments of many before me and many yet to come. We demand a ceasefire resolution for the genocide in Gaza and divestment from both CAT and Caterpillar, whose profits are helping fund that genocide. Never before have I been so utterly disappointed and disgusted by the actions of my local elected officials. The ceasefire resolution, as originally requested and bargained for by your citizens, the people you supposedly are elected to represent, is a symbolic gesture designed to show solidarity with those horrified and suffering from the ongoing genocide currently being committed by Israel and funded by the United States. But apparently, that symbolic gesture is too much. Instead of taking a stand for the people of your city, people who have lost family members and communities, people who are going through unimaginable pain, you sit silent and play games designed to stifle speech and expression, you propose puppet proposals and ignore us. Your games haven't worked, instead, they've galvanized us. This is my second meeting here for Gaza, I was a little late to the train, but I will be here again, and I will be speaking. Didn't intend to, but here we are. You say that you don't want to sow discord and division among the community, but it's here already. Calling for an end to the indiscriminate slaughter of children, ethnic cleansing, and what is undoubtedly a genocide, is but the simplest embarrassed acts of humanity. Calling for a ceasefire would be a step forward in unifying our community, as it is but a small vocal minority who oppose it. The vast majority of Americans overwhelmingly support a ceasefire, and that is also the case here in Farmington Hills. It is my dearest hope that you take my words and the words of everyone here in support of Palestine tonight to heart, but until that day, shame on you. Shame on you for being able, unable to take the easiest action possible to stand on the right side of history. I am beyond grateful to live in a community filled with this much passion and conviction, but I am appalled by the actions of this council. I urge you to listen to your citizens, the people you are elected to represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Jacob, I am, my name is Jacob, I'm from Farmington Hills as well.
Could you get closer to the microphone, please?
My name is Jacob, I, I live in Farmington Hills as well. My, my fiancee Claire spoke before me. I, again, I, I much, like, like several others here, I don't, I didn't really intend to speak, and I don't particularly want to in the foreground scene, but we, it feels like we haven't really been given any choice, a choice to do anything else in support of, of the groups here. So here I am, I, I try not to speak too much, but I, but I want to at least reiterate a few points. Again, I was, I was happy for a second that we, that we saw some sort of recognition through the, through the proclamation that was added to the agenda this day, but even, but I'm immeasurably more disappointed that it, that it got removed at the slightest pushback. Again, it, it wasn't even enough, it, it, it didn't even call for a ceasefire, which is what we've been asking for. Let's see. And as such, this is what we're asking for. So again, in addition to that, we're also asking that we divest from CAT and Caterpillar, because their, their profits go toward funding this, the same, the same genocide. And again, yes, it, the, the actions of this committee, I feel like have done more to galvanize people than, than, than any actual, than taking any sort of stance on this would actually do. I had more notes on top of all that, but, oh, well, that's better. Again, I've, I've been appalled by the, like, complete inaction of this committee up until now on this matter, and again, it's, it's really cut into my faith in, in my local elected And again, at the very least, we're, we're not asking you guys to take a side in this matter, we're asking, we're asking for peace and, and to divest from companies who are actively working against said peace. I believe that, I believe I'm good.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
Hi, my name is Dr. Shnisa Kamarn, and I am a resident of Farmington Hills. I am also currently a student in my third year at Ohio State University, but I was raised here my, most of my life for over 19 years, and I will be speaking on the ceasefire that we are demanding as Farmington Hills residents. Ignoring this issue is not only unjust, but also not democratic. The people here have a voice, and this council is meant to represent that, so ignoring our voices for six months by repeatedly not speaking on the genocide in Gaza, and our contribution to it is being ignorant and unrepresentative of the residents of Farmington Hills. We are taxpayers, and we deserve a voice. There's a 10-year memorandum of understanding between Israel and the United States, SS Israel is going to get $3.3 billion in foreign military financing every single year. We are funding this genocide, and we have no control over where the money that our families are going. We demand divestment from all investment in Israel companies and deserve the chance to change where our tax-paying dollars go. I'm a student, and I've seen consistent incompetence everywhere I go, from my camp, from my campus in Columbus, Ohio, where over 70 members of law enforcement forcibly arrested 40 students of our local encampment, where hijabs are ripped off, ripped off, where they were strip-searched and aggressively arrested while praying. A group of over 100 students, ages 18 to 22-year-olds, joined hands to demand divestment from Israel companies on my campus. Our demands were not heard there, and it is heartbreaking to come back to see the very same thing happening in my hometown. All hospitals have been bombed in Gaza, false promises have been made of peace if people moved away from their homes in Gaza, and they listened. They're all now in the most densely populated city in the world, Rafah, and are continuing to get bombed. In the United States, Farmington Hills, and all of us are funding this genocide. If we have no say over the US government sending weapons over to Israel, let us at least divest from the companies continuing to fund the death of thousands of children, women, and men. I'm disappointed to be a resident of a city that will not listen to their citizens' demands all because of a strategic partnership we have with an apartheid state. I am sad, as a student, I'm a part of a community that is collectively doing more than the entire government is doing to stay on the right side of history. I hope to say to one, I hope to say to my kids one day that my hometown listened to their people and our demands, and we were able to play our part and is crucial part of history. We are calling for a ceasefire, and we wanted our city to, and we want our city to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mina Cormory, and I am an Indian-American, and I have been a citizen of Farmington Hills for my whole life, as well as a student at Michigan State University. My argument today does not seek to harm any other group, it is not anti-Semitic, it is simply anti-violence and pro-peace. Palestinian civilians have not been given a chance to escape, they are being starved, deprived of medical care, 97% of Gaza's water is undrinkable, all hospitals have been bombed, you've heard these statistics over and over again, yesterday, tomorrow, today, every night. When three of my classmates tragically lost their lives, February 13th, 2023, lost their lives, February 13th, 2023, at Michigan State University, I was outraged and there was widespread outrage across my campus and across Michigan. However, we were able to protest, speak out, and eventually enact stronger gun laws, which did make a difference. Now I ask you to feel outraged again, to feel connected to the pain of Palestinians, to feel empathy, and to stand on the right side of history. This is not a war. This is a genocide. This is a decimation of a people. The death toll in Palestine has surpassed 35,000. This is indiscriminate murder of women, children, elderly, anyone and everyone, and it's being fueled by our country's tax dollars. It's clear now that Israel's goal is not just to get rid of Hamas, it's to get rid of Palestine. And as others have mentioned, their bombings have been killing their own civilians, their own citizens. And this didn't start now. Palestine has been under attack for over 70 years. I ask you all to please divest Farmington Hills from all Israeli companies, cut all funding, divest from CAT and Caterpillar. I ask that not a single one of our taxpayer dollars support Israel or genocide, and that Farmington Hills pass a ceasefire resolution. Calling for ceasefire does not divide the community as some of you might believe. It is simply a move that signifies humanity, that killing children and babies is not something that Americans or citizens of Michigan stand for. Genocide does not unite the community, it divides it. This is not controversial. It's not a war. It's not a two-sided issue. It's one country slaughtering another and we are paying for it. I ask you to look at this with an open mind, to hear the people in this room, to think about why we are here today, understand that all we want is peace, not more violence. All we want is a ceasefire and that innocent people do not deserve to die. I hope you all will make me proud to call myself a citizen of Farmington Hills and to call this my hometown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in, please.
Hi, my name is Maria and I live in Canton, Michigan, who Canton, Michigan has already called for a ceasefire. I'm a Yemeni Muslim-American. One of my most important labels, however, is a human being, someone that stands with their brothers and sisters and fellow human beings around the world. I'm not going to come here and list the 40,000 dead or the 78,000 injured or the 10,000 missing in Gaza because numbers clearly don't matter to you guys. I'm here to share a poem in hopes that your dead hearts might feel something. I know for a fact that I will not in the future let my children know that I was complicit in genocide. I will stand up for justice as my religion and my moral compass have guided me. The poem "Younger Than War" was written by the Palestinian Gazan father, Musab Abu Toha. He has lived through occupation, siege, and bombardment his whole life. Tanks roll through dusk through eggplant fields. Beds unmade, lightning in the sky. Brother jumps to the window to watch warplanes flying through clouds of smoke after airstrikes. Warplanes that look like eagles searching for a tree branch to perch on catch breath. But these metal eagles are catching souls in blood-boned soup. No need for radio, we are the news. Ants hear, ants' ears hurt with each bullet filed, fired from warthful war machines. Soldiers advance, burn books, some smoke, rolled sheets of yesterday's newspaper, just like they did when we were kids. Our kids hide in the basement, backs against concrete pillars, heads between knees, parents silent, humid down there, and the heat of burning bombs adds to the slow death of survival. In September 2000, after I had bought bread for dinner, I saw a helicopter firing a rocket into a tower as far from me as my frightful cries when I heard concrete and glass fall from high. Loaves of bread went stale. I was seven at the time. I was decades younger than war, a few years older than bombs. The first prime minister of this terrorist state said, "The old will die and the young will forget." The old have died, but the young will never forget. I now implore you as human beings, before your position that you hold as council members, to call for a ceasefire resolution, divest from CAT, Caterpillar, and any companies linked to Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Good evening. Good evening, city council members. My name is Halima and I'm a high school student and resident of Farmington Hills. I've lived here my whole life and I would love if our city council could represent our voice. I've been coming here for the last six months and I've came countless of nights and stayed here long until the nights, like 12:00 AM and 1:00. And I've came here on the days that we were fasting, on the days that we were hungry. And I've chosen to stand up for my Palestinian brothers and sisters over having to eat. And all of a sudden, when a ceasefire is put on the agenda, people start coming who are opposing the ceasefire and all of a sudden the ceasefire disappears. After our work of being here for six months, the opposites come and after all of our hard work, they just come and in one go, they just take it down. And this shows how easy it is to sway to one side and for our decision to be removed. And our city gives $1.3 million to Israel per year. And this is our tax money. This is the money that should go to fix our roads, our education and healthcare. And this is just morally wrong and it's wrong in a sense of humanity. And you don't have to be Arab, you don't have to be Muslim to support this genocide because this, this is, this is a moral right. This is, you just have to have a sense of humanity. And you are city council members and you should be here to represent our voices and be a representation of us. And if you could listen to the concerns of your constituents in past a ceasefire, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Yeah, my name is Patrick Demirz. I live, I live up north. I used to live in Oakland County in Farmington at one time. I graduated from Oakland University, went to Wayne State. In the human services field, I worked with the state of Michigan Department of Human Services, and I did protective services investigations for adults and children. And you can imagine in that kind of work, I've seen some pretty bad stuff with children and adults. And I stuck with that work for all the years, the 30 years that I worked for the state. And I thought it was important work that we did. And as you know, in Michigan and the United States, we have very tough laws about any abuse of children. And we should. And I think one of the most abhorrent things when people hear about children being abused sexually, physically, emotionally, psychologically, it tears us up. Probably most, if not all of you, had children, grandchildren. You never want any harm to come to them. And if any harm did ever come, I'm sure you were very defensive and protective of them and made sure that everything would get better. And when I see, when I witness what's going on in, in Palestine, Israel, it just tears me up. That children are starving, they don't have water, they don't have food, they're losing arms and legs, they're seeing parents dying. They don't deserve to pay any price for what some terrorists did in October, which is terrible and needs to be addressed, and those people need to be brought to justice. And I would encourage Israel to continue to find them and seek them out and bring them to justice. But the kids over there don't deserve, the families don't deserve what's raining down upon them on a daily basis. Destruction of their homes, hospitals, universities, everything that's going on to them. We would never, ever tolerate activity like this in this United States. We would stop it immediately if anything like that was going on. And yet we support this financially and sometimes we're reluctant to stand up and take a strong stand against it. And we should. And anything that you folks can do, anything at all that you can agree on in any kind of a resolution, I would encourage you, please do that. There's, I don't think there's anything more important going on right now in this world than what's happening over there. And if you supported Ukraine, thank you for doing that. I've done the same. I've gone to their meetings. I've sent them medical stuff and money because it's, it's the same thing going on in Ukraine. Innocent people dying that don't deserve to die at the hands of stronger militaries, and that's what's going on in Israel. And I, to me, it's just unconscionable. And I think we all have to do whatever we can to stop it. And I have a lot of good Jewish friends, some of my favorite people in college and in my profession were Jewish people. There's nothing at all, I have no hard feelings at all about Jewish people. Great people. It's nothing, it's, it's not that at all. It's just that we need to stop this killing and hurting and maiming and starving of innocent people. And I, I think, if you just think maybe for a minute, think about if this was happening in your family, in your town, in Farmington Hills or someplace else, how would you feel? And what would you do to try to stop it? You'd probably do everything you could. I can't imagine that you wouldn't. So look at it from that personal level. These kids don't deserve what's happening to them. And thank you. And by the way, I think everything tonight was really well organized. The police have been great to talk to. I really applaud you folks for the orderliness and, and staying up late and listening, and you've been very polite. And it's, it's run very well. Thank you very much for everything you've done. And thanks for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Hi, I'm Rana and I'm from Farmington Hills. I've lived here my whole life. I'm from Palestine and my entire extended family currently lives in Palestine and has for generations. As you have heard constantly today and in the months before, your lack of attention is honestly sickening. I didn't think I would speak today since I'm sick and exhausted of speaking to people that are uninformed and simply don't care for other people. But it's your job at the end of the day to care for your city's residents, no? You are all incredibly privileged, we all are, to sit here and drink water, eat food, stare at your phones, you know, not make eye contact with most of us. And at the end of the day, you get to go home and sleep with a roof over your head. And again, at the end of the day, we get to all live. Palestinians don't have this privilege due to Israel's occupation and constant terrorization. I've grown up on stories of my father being put in front of Israeli trucks and being used as a human shield. Excuse me. Or how he had to go through numerous checkpoints just to attend university. I'm so sorry. And how our family members have been killed for no reason. Palestine has been an open-air prison for decades. Again, as we have all stated, this did not start on October 7. And if you believe that, I urge you to look at the history and educate yourself before forming an opinion. You will never understand because you think that we are not affected by what happens overseas. However, does this really seem like an overseas issue to you today? It's a humanitarian crisis. It's affecting your city residents, as you can see, as they are all standing here before you today. You guys will never understand what it feels like to hold your mom in the middle of the night as she receives a phone call from our family members telling us that they're still alive after we watched on social media my neighborhood get carpet bombed. You will never understand what that feels like. We see college students speaking up everywhere. The UN, the United Nations, has called for a ceasefire. We are constantly here telling you of all the atrocities and war crimes that are being committed to my people. More than half of you won't even make eye contact with me as I'm standing in front of you, pleading with you to just hear our voices and hear that we need change. And you will never understand what it feels like to wonder if your family is still alive. You will never understand what that feels like. To wonder if they have enough food to eat, if they drank enough water, how they are going to the bathroom or grooming themselves or showering, simple things that we all take so much advantage of. These are simple things that they don't have access to anymore. They are suffering day and night and being terrorized daily over land. Every day, we are hurting for Palestine and the ethnic cleansing occurring in my homeland. I urge you all just to be human, to go home tonight in your beds, the beds that you so graciously have, and think about the speeches we have given you today. Truly think about them. I know you have heard about this for months, but truly, you don't understand how much this affects us. We would not be here if we didn't have to be here. We would not be here. And I am, I don't want to be crying in front of you. I don't even know you guys. But I just need you guys to hear me and to understand that this affects your residents. My family has lived in this city our whole lives. I don't understand how different issues are being treated differently. As my peers have mentioned, Ukraine, how is this any different? Why is it different when Palestinians are suffering? I do not understand. We have suffered for 75 years and counting. And you guys can't even give me enough attention. Not even all of you are making eye, eye contact with me. That's what I find the most shameful about tonight. You guys can't even look us in the eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Good evening. My name is Shari Abu-Shabab and I'm from Grand Blank. I'm, it's a long night and I have work in the morning, so I'm going to keep it kind of short and sweet. I, a lot, a lot of the things that you've heard, it's been repeated over and over, so I'm going to speak from what I have. And I can't even begin to be as emotional as you have seen. I also have family in Gaza and it is incredibly terrifying to feel that they have, they have nothing to even look forward to. People, I, my sister is graduating this year and there are people that have been born in this war and have died just in this, in the time from October to right now, not even just before. There are people that graduated and there are people that will never, ever graduate. I don't want to repeat the millions and the things that you've heard over and over again, but these people truly do need this help. And I want to say that our, our tax money funds this. It's sad because I'm studying to be a teacher. Our education system is shot through. Our healthcare system is terrible. There are countries that have amazing education systems. Every child gets an equal opportunity within, without any discrimination. There, the healthcare system is free. And there are, and here we see, we give taxes, we give our money in taxes and we see no return. Where do we see it? We see it in dead bodies on the ground dying. $300 billion given in tax, from our taxes in Israel. You know how many, divided by 50 states, that's $60 billion. That's an insane. I would say that even if we can detach ourselves from Palestine, I don't know how, but if you want to, we can at least look at it selfishly and say that this money that we are giving to Israel can be used to fund domestically. A ceasefire is not just, oh, this is over there. It's right here. It's affecting us. It's affecting not only our daily lives, but also the daily lives of Palestinians and the people who are struggling daily just to survive here in the US. I want to urge you to call for a ceasefire. It is incredibly important in any way, even just as a human. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Zainab. I am from Dearborn. I don't want to take too much time from the residents here, but I have seen through your repeated, their repeated demonstrations and yet you still haven't called for a serious ceasefire resolution. That proves to me that you do not take into consideration the feelings and opinions of your community members. So I'm coming to give an outside perspective. One second. If you have not been convinced, if you have not been convinced so far by the sheer numbers coming out of Gaza, the, the over 35,000 innocent civilian deaths, I don't know what will convince you. However, if you need to hear it from a, from a student perspective, there are students here in here in the US, a huge majority of students, who care deeply about this issue, who want a ceasefire, and they, and you continue to ignore those calls, you continue to ignore the mental health of the youth in your communities who are watching what is going on and who are wondering why their leaders can't speak up and stand on the right side of history and call for a permanent ceasefire resolution. I know it doesn't seem like your town can make a huge change and immediately cause a ceasefire, but as we have seen with the Vietnam War, we look back at student protests and we see that they were standing on the right side of history. And taking that symbolic step is going to be so important in the history of our cities, our community, to show that we stood on the right side of history, we stood for human rights, and we stood for the innocent children dying in Palestine. I'm sorry, I can't find much else to say because I am not sure how you haven't been convinced already. If you want to hear it from an environmental point of view, I am a student, I'm going into environmental science. The millions of tons of greenhouse gases released by the continued bombardment of Gaza is going to further destroy our own habitats, our own, that's going to fall back on our own Great Lakes. When people are hurting on the other side of the world, it affects us too. And it affects especially your community members who are grieving for their own family overseas and who are terrified. I myself, I'm a Lebanese American, I'm half Lebanese, and I am terrified for my own family overseas as regional war threatens to break out. And it's just so important that you stand up as a leader and call for a ceasefire resolution to really make a change, whether symbolically or just through one by one, making a change. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Name, please, the city you live in.
I'm gonna start by saying Assalamualaikum, which means peace be upon you all. I'm gonna give myself an alias name, because my name doesn't matter to anyone, to be honest with you. My name is Gaza. That's my name.
And the city you live in now, please. Your residence?
The city I live in is called Campbell in California. I'm visiting this city here.
Thank you.
I've been here for a few days. In my own city, I refused to attend any council meetings, thinking, what difference does it make? But I have my own children who look at me and say, Mom, we can understand. You have other jobs to do. You can be active, you can advocate for that in other ways, we can understand. I just came out of a lumbar fusion surgery a couple months ago. But here I am, standing in front of you right now. And I hope, I'm just wondering, I'm looking at each one of you, thinking, what can you be thinking after hearing one after one after one of us looking maybe the same to you, repeating maybe the same thing that you've probably heard before? You probably saw videos of what we're talking about, of those amputated limbs, burned babies, trapped, you know, under the rubble of their own homes since day one, since October 7, where some claim that this war, which is not a war, it's a genocide, started. Some people can't even reach their home that's been destroyed to get their kids and their families from under those rubble. Until now, why? Because there are tanks, Israeli tanks, who's surrounding the area that shoots them right there, knowing that they're innocent. There are buildings that, you know, the Palestinians wrote on them, please check those areas when you can, when it's safe. My family is still buried under those rubble. Imagine your own kids, your own families, for no fault at all, is, you know, they're, you know, under the rubble. No one can reach them. Why? Because Israeli tanks, and I'm not gonna call them IDF, it's Israeli, just Israeli. Okay, excuse me, English is not my first language. And yes, I wasn't born here, but I'm trying my best to give you a picture here. Why are we all here at this time, from different walks of, you know, like of this world? Yeah, maybe, I didn't even have a kufiya with me, because I was not planning this. You know what a kufiya is? This kufiya, it might look to you like a scarf with some, you know, wiggly whatever, you know, writing or drawings on them. Each one of those lines means something to us. It means how to break through the bars of, you know, like jail to go and, you know, like, get our freedom from jails, where there's more than 5,000, you know, admin detainees, you know, what do you call that? Demonstrated, what do you call, like, people, for no fault, for no crime, they're being in jail, in Israeli jails. We're talking about children on administrative, you know, like, leave, thank you. I mean, again, I am from Gaza. I love many people from my own family. All I can tell you, please, you're looking at me. I really don't want to know what you're thinking right now. I don't want to know what you thought already, when you heard all of those people before me and whatever you heard so far, what you're thinking about. But, look at it from a humanitarian, you know, point of view. You know, pretend that you are one of us. Don't you want peace right now? You know, the Israelis and those supporters of Israelis have an agenda, you know, that they have a script that they keep repeating over and over and over. Oh, they raped our woman, they hated babies, blah, blah. All of that was refuted. Okay? I'm sorry, I don't know if someone has said anything. I don't, I really don't have time to talk about any of that. But, I'm telling you, all of that proved to be lies, because they don't have, you know, they don't have a true agenda to fight back, because all they're doing, they're targeting innocent people. It's ethnic cleansing, it's genocide. They're killing people. They want Gaza so that they can build their own hotels there, they can get back their beaches, and they just want Palestine. It's called Palestine. It's Palestine. It was once on the map, and now it's not on the map anymore. All I'm telling you, please, if you have a heart, please, support the ceasefire.
Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Sarah, and I live in Troy. I work in Bloomfield Hills in food service, and all sorts of people come in. Just like you, I see people from all walks of life. Bloomfield Hills has a high population of Jewish people. Muslim people come in because we serve halal. Businessmen and women come in because they all need one thing, food. Men, women, and children in Gaza are starving. Children are losing their pudgy faces, and their hair is turning gray from malnutrition. They lie awake at night in fear that if they go to sleep, they will never wake up. Children have been exposed to the sound of bombs, the sight of bodies, the smell of rotten flesh. Hind Rahab was a six-year-old girl who was trapped in a car while her whole family was shot to death by Israeli forces. She spent hours on the phone with Red Crescent before the call was disconnected, and ultimately, Israel murdered her after hours of being trapped with her dead family members. Mothers have lost their children, children have lost their parents, and are left to take care of their younger siblings, all while being displaced from their homes and forced to flee their camps each time Israel expands their offensive attacks. Israel has targeted historic cultural sites, universities, and hospitals. Since they have destroyed the medical system in Palestine, there is no way to properly track the amount of deaths anymore. For more than 40, there are far more than 40,000 dead. Aid is being blocked from entering Gaza. Just last week, a cargo ship full of aid was denied entry. Israel has targeted doctors, journalists, activists, and wiped entire families from existence. I personally cannot see these atrocities and stay silent, nor just call for peace. I stand here in support of the Palestinian people who have been occupied and brutalized by Israel for 76 years, since the Nakba, when over 15,000 people were killed and even more were displaced from their homes. Through the last 76 years, they have continued to occupy Palestinian land with violence, killing, and unjust arrests. How can we, as a democratic nation, stand by while these injustices go on? Our president is not listening to us. Our Congress is not listening to us. The UN called for an immediate ceasefire, and the US representatives blocked it. We need you to listen to us. We need you to make a statement of ceasefire, of true solidarity, to show that someone is listening to us. How can you be in a position of power where you can show the people in your jurisdiction that you care about them and you care about their families, just by making a statement calling for a ceasefire, and you don't say anything? A ceasefire is the bare minimum. What we actually want is divestment from Israel. A divestment from Caterpillar, whose profits fund the occupation and whose bulldozers killed the American activist Rachel Corey. Did you know Israelis celebrate her killing by making pancakes? That's true, you can look it up. How can we support such barbarism? To finish, I would like to read a poem by Rafat Al-Arir, who was a professor in Gaza, and he posted this poem on Twitter days before he died. "If I must die, you must live to tell my story, to sell my things, to buy a piece of cloth and some strings. Make it white with a long tail, so that a child, somewhere in Gaza, while looking heaven in the eye, awaiting his dad who left in a blaze and bid no one farewell, not even to his flesh, not even to himself, sees the kite, my kite you made, flying up above, and thinks for a moment, an angel is there, bringing back love. If I must die, let it bring hope, let it be a tale." The Palestinian people that I know are full of love. They support their communities, they support peace, and they show up for people in need. That's what we need to do as a community, because we are a community. I'm in community with everyone in Farmington Hills, everyone in Michigan, everyone in the United States, everyone in the world is in my community. I love each and every one of them. And we need to support life. We need to show that we care about people being alive. The very least that we can do is call for a ceasefire. I think it's awful that this peace agenda was removed tonight, and I implore you to think deeply about the things that you've heard tonight. Educate yourself on the Israeli occupation, and do better.
Thank you. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Palestine Hura, and I'm from Dearborn. And I want to start off by saying Salaam, peace be upon you all. This did not begin on October 7, 2023. This Nakba, this catastrophe, this genocide, began 76 years ago this week in 1948. My family, my Palestinian family, was displaced in 1948. I will not state the numbers, and I will not state all the killings that's happened since 76 years ago, just because clearly you guys don't care about those numbers. They were stated over a dozen times today, and, you know, it just seems like I'm not getting the, we're not getting the type of respect and attention that we deserve. This is not a conflict, it's a genocide. The IOF killed children, infants, women, and for what? Just purely being Palestinian, having that Palestinian blood in them. Just because you guys think the media isn't talking about it anymore, and just because you guys don't see that it's trending and you don't see it on your phones, doesn't mean it's still not happening. These innocent people are still dying and hurting daily. We need to keep sharing their stories, their hunger, their poverty, and their fight for a better life. The world needs to see it. They are humans, just like you and I, and they deserve basic human rights, peace, and love, just like the rest of the world. That feeling of being Palestinian, I really can't explain it to anyone. We literally watched the genocide unfold in front of all of us. Every single one of you guys in this room has seen a person in Gaza be killed. No limbs, no blood, just everywhere. I know you guys, everyone has a phone here, and I know you guys all have seen it. That feeling of helplessness, I'll never forget, because while I get to go eat, families are searching for just one bite of food in Gaza. Because when I say I don't feel like going to sleep, people are sleeping with fear, not knowing if they're gonna wake up tomorrow. Because while I say I don't want to go to class, children don't grow up and get to pursue their dreams and careers. Because while I get to see my family every single day, people are losing their own families. And while I get to live without worry, there's people who are going through challenges that are so horrible to even imagine and to even think about. If you're tired of hearing about Palestine, imagine how tired our Palestinian brothers and sisters back home are, living it and experiencing hell every day on earth since 1948. Palestine doesn't have an army. Israel is sending an army into Gaza to fight people who literally don't have an army to fight back with. You guys call it war, this is a genocide. Let me just state that it is Nurses Week this week, it is Teacher Appreciation Month, and I'm sure many of us here do work in that field. And let's just not forget the nurses, and the teachers, and the children in Gaza. We will honor all our martyrs. And as you can see, there are many, many people here today calling for a ceasefire, and we've been here for several months. You guys seen it, everyone else has seen it. I just, I really don't understand. You guys have your eyes and ears open, hearing the news, hearing this, you don't even need CNN news, you just need, you have a phone. You have a phone, we see it in color. Back then, we can say, oh, we didn't see it, we don't know, we were too young, we were, you know, we'll blame it on us being dumb. But, everyone has a phone now. And I'm sure you guys all have phones, because as people are speaking, each and every one of you guys, I've seen at least touch your phone once while we're trying to state what we're here for, a ceasefire. Free Palestine and ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The snapping, please, must stop. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Robbie. I'm from Bloomfield Hills. I don't have words of my own today, so I'd like to highlight some words of others. My first words I'd like to reiterate are that of Brother Malcolm X. And he said, "The Palestinian struggle is not just a cry for justice. It's a blistering battle for the most fundamental human rights that every living soul on this planet should inherit by birthright. It is an unyielding resistance against the oppressive, suffocating grip of occupation and the callous denial of the most basic human dignity." These words were not written October 7. These words were not written last year. These words were written in the 60s. So that can give you some context as to how the American struggle of civil rights is tied with Palestinian struggle. So this is not something over there. This is right here. I'd like to just go to recite a description of some incidents in Palestine. I'm sorry for the graphic nature. "The paramedic informed the physician that a woman was raped for two days until she lost her ability to speak. Another woman at Nassar Hospital was stripped of her clothing by Israeli soldiers in front of her husband and brother. And when one of them took their clothes off to cover her, the Israeli soldier killed both her brother and her husband." Just let that sink in. These aren't myths, these aren't made-up stories. These are stories with corroborated testimony. So, we are mothers, we are daughters, we are granddaughters. This is also a women's rights issue. So I don't see how this doesn't apply to a ceasefire saying, just stop the fighting. Two kids fight, you say, stop the fighting. We'll talk about the issues in a minute. Just stop the fighting. You don't give a kid a knife, and a kid another knife, and say, go at it. It's complicated. We get in there and we say, stop. I'd like to, are we allowed to put audio?
No.
Phone, no, okay. So, that's really it. I don't have words of my own. I can just tell you a little bit about myself. I'm from New York. I thought, in my naivety, I had witnessed the worst that I had seen. I was, on 9/11, I worked in Brooklyn, at a hospital right across from the towers, and I was able to, we saw the second plane hit. I'm born and raised in New York. Many funerals I went to of people in 9/11 that were killed. I know people who had friends or their family jump out of the towers. I've seen videos. I treated patients that day that came in, walked in, so on their face, firefighters, policemen. I was there as a first responder. I drove patients home that day because we needed beds, because we thought that we were gonna have an influx of people. No one came. No one came. I literally took out stitches of patients of knee replacements. I drove them home, because we were waiting, we were waiting for the survivors to come from 9/11. They never did. They never did. So I can't imagine... So I can't imagine the pain and just the sheer amount of distress that these people in Palestine are going through. I thought I had witnessed what I thought was a major trauma for me, and it was nothing compared to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
Yeah, my name is Tommy Airi, I live in Detroit. And I just, I echo so much of what has been spoken today. Murray Khan called us a mafia earlier. I'm part of the mafia, but we are a mafia that's committed to love, justice, compassion, truth, and humility, through and through. And I think we've heard that over and over and over tonight. I'm also a Christian. I'm a graduate of Fuller Theological Seminary in Southern California. It's an evangelical Christian grad school. I also come to you as the great-great-great-grandson of survivors of the genocide in Ireland. My great-great-great-grandparents, five of them, actually, were forcibly starved by the British government. And it's exactly what is going on in Palestine today. And on top of that, in Palestine today, the state of Israel is bombing, and murdering, and shooting, and all sorts of other things to tens and thousands of Palestinians, just like they did to my relatives 150 years ago. So I'm not really disappointed about the proclamation of peace, because personally, if it doesn't have ceasefire language, if it doesn't have divestment language, at the very least, it's racist and it's Islamophobic. It's racist and it's Islamophobic, and I make that judgment on the dictates of history and conscience. So when my great-great-great-grandparents came to the United States, they became white. And they signed off on all of these racist policies over and over and over again. So I'm here to stop the cycle of violence. This is one small part of speaking out. And what we've seen in our history in the United States is the plantation, and the frontier, and the reservation, and the ghetto, and now the Gaza Strip. And it's the same old story over and over and over again. White Christians signing off on all sorts of racist, violent, discriminatory behavior. And so when I read the proclamation for peace earlier today that was on the website, it wasn't saying anything. It was like going back in history to the days of slavery, to the days of Jim Crow, to the days of the Vietnam War, to the days of the slaughter of the native population in the United States, and just saying, well, you know, we're down with both sides. I don't know what you say to that. Because when we look back on history and we look at our forebears, my ancestors, who maybe said, "Well, yeah, I can kind of see both sides," it's tremendously disappointing. It's grievous. And I've played that game over and over and over my whole life. What would I do? What would I do if I lived during the time of slavery? Would I be an abolitionist? Or would I be down with slavery? Or would I be just kind of a watered-down white liberal who just shrugged his shoulders and said, "Ah, I don't know, I'm neutral?" Over and over and over again. That's painful. That's history. That's American history. And so I come to you begging, demanding conscience in this city. And when I say conscience, I just mean love, justice, compassion, truth, humility. That's the bottom line. This is a moment, like it was during the time of the plantation, the frontier, the reservation, the creation of the ghetto not that long ago, the maintenance of the ghetto right now. This is a moment, right now, where we must have moral clarity and political courage. And this is the third time I've been here, and I'm gonna keep coming back, because that's all we ask for, is moral clarity and political courage. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city that you live in.
My name is Alexandria, and I live in Farmington Hills. Good morning, I see we all here had a paid nap, an Georgia nap. It's been six months. It's been six months of tireless advocating for a ceasefire resolution, and what you pulled today was a slap in the face. But you know what? It's not a slap in the face to me, it's a slap in the face to you. I am prepared to come back here, week after week, stay up all hours in the night, and reach my final goal, like many others in here. We want a ceasefire. We want a ceasefire resolution, and we want you to call for a ceasefire. You just sealed your fate, we're coming back again and again till we get what we want. A ceasefire, it's plain and simple. It is unjustifiable not to call for an end to genocide when all the facts are laid out to you on a silver platter. You know, you mentioned that some people outside the city asked you to call for a ceasefire, and you listened to them. They are outside of your city, so they are not your constituents, and therefore you shouldn't listen to them. They don't represent what we want. They don't represent what the constituents that keep coming to you, meeting after meeting, what we want. We want a ceasefire. And please, do yourself a favor, don't lie to yourself. The reason why today's meeting wasn't recorded wasn't because of technical difficulties, it was because you don't want your spineless actions displayed for all of the internet to see. You know what you did was wrong, so grow a spine and do what's right. Divest from supporting genocide now, stop funding the murder of Palestinian people.
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Melina Peretzakis, and I live here in Farmington Hills. So I've been coming to a lot of these meetings. I've come to all of them in the past few months, since like February or January. Yes, I have. And I've gone about these little talks that I've had in many different ways, and I kind of wondered if maybe I should try guilt-tripping you guys, because that seems to maybe be the last option that I have. So I'm gonna talk about, out of the 40,000 people that are dead in Gaza, I'm gonna talk about the 17,000 children that are dead, and the people that had their whole lives ahead of them, who had families, friends, and opportunities that have been cut off because their lives have been violently ended. There are parents who will never get to see their babies first, their first step, their first word, the first time they tried this food or that experience, saying mama, mommy, daddy, baba. That's never gonna happen for them. Toddlers are never gonna experience growing up, seeing the world for their first time, being curious and asking questions. What's this, and how does that work? They're never gonna ask, they're never gonna go to school, make friends, play with their favorite toy, learn to read, color, or doing anything that we did as kids. They can't do that because they've been murdered by Israel. Older kids and teens are never gonna have, to experience all the things we have: friendships, drama, classes, favorite teachers, least favorite classes, puberty, a growing independence, like, hey, let's go to the corner store and pick up a snack together. They can't do that because they were massacred by Israel. The ones who made it to high school and were able to graduate only to be abruptly murdered by the I.O.F. will never experience the excitement, joy, and happiness of going to university or to go to school abroad in places like Britain and other Middle Eastern countries. They will never experience the joy of getting married to the person that they love and starting a family. They can't because they were slaughtered by Israel's merciless army, somehow dubbed the most moral army in the world. To come to a full circle, those parents will never get to see all their children's first because they are either dead or they outlived their kids. Can you imagine the horror, the grief, the unimaginable pain that they have, knowing that their kids became martyrs before their very own eyes?
Thank you. Good evening, your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Free Palestine, and I am from Earth. I don't think it matters where we're from, because we belong to Earth. And I don't think it matters what I'm gonna say, because none of you were listening. Maybe you were, so thank you. You looked very serious the whole time. I think you were the only one listening. He doesn't care. His head's always been down. She doesn't care, she's been playing with her earrings, she's been eating, he's been looking at the computer, she's been falling asleep. He's gone, he doesn't care, he doesn't care, she doesn't care. So how are we supposed to give you our respect when you don't respect us? I have tons of hours of video of you falling asleep while we're talking to you. I know you don't care. I know this means nothing to you. We know that. I know that. We all know that. We know a ceasefire is not gonna be on the agenda, because you don't care. The life of others don't matter to you. We get that, because if they did, you would already have done something about it. As we can still see, you don't care, you're still looking away. You don't care, he's on his phone, busy. Something is way more important. How can I give you my respect? Let's wait for him to finish his text, it's way more important. Yeah, see, we're nothing. We don't matter. He's more important. I'm waiting for you to finish, are you done? It's not nice when you don't respect people. People don't respect you back. How can we treat you with empathy when you don't have empathy? How? We're not bad people. We're just angry people. We're hurt. Hurt people hurt people. We're human beings who have families that are hurt. You think you're the only human being on the planet? You think we're not humans, but you are? Your family are the only family? You're the only one that matters? Whatever text you were sending is the most important text? That none of us matter? But your time only matters? She doesn't care. She's been whatever she's doing the whole night. I'm gonna wait for her to finish, too. So much respect. These are your elected officials, people. One term, one and done. Yeah, they don't listen, they don't care. I'm still waiting, by the way. She's writing, I don't know what she's doodling in there. Today was a boring day, we had to listen to all these people complaining about so many people dying, oh my God, so boring. Shopping is so much more fun. Still, no one is home. You think you're more important this way? You think like you're more in control? Well, the manager doesn't care, they said it's not important because he's the manager, so he doesn't need to pay attention. We've asked that question before, so he gets the chance to play on his computer or his phone, he gets to do, yeah, he's just the manager, they don't care. But they said, "Address the committee." She's one of the committee, but she doesn't care. Funny, yeah. Respect is earned, not given. You don't get our respect. It only makes you look smaller when you treat us this way. Randy, Mr. Busy. We get it, you guys don't care. I mean, we got the memo. We wouldn't be here for seven weeks. I mean, seven months, you get the gist. Still, no one is home.
Good evening, your name, and the city you live in, please.
P.G., and I'm a homeowner in the city of Farmington Hills. You know, I am really disgusted with what I've heard a lot of grown people say. And what I'm disgusted about is, all of you are sitting up there filming the mayor, close-up, you're filming each and every one of these council people talking about they're not paying attention to what you said and the word "respect." Do you think bamin' on the glass out there was respectful to you as elected officials? Do you think hearing the yelling out there, saying ceasefire while you're trying to conduct city business was respect? I don't think it's respect. And I'm a homeowner here, too. I pay taxes here, too. I've been in this city for 11 years. I have never seen water on the floor, the bathroom, empty water bottles, tissue and paper all over the damn floor. That's not what my city does. This is a very clean city, LEED certified, and every single meeting, I go in the bathroom, that's what I see. That's not respect. That's not respecting my tax dollars. Now, what you guys are asking for, it's plausible. Nobody wants to see what's going on in the world. We know that nothing good comes from violence. But answer me some questions here. What is a ceasefire going to do here? And what is it going to make Hamas do? Is it going to make Hamas release the hostages? Is it going to bring peace, really, in Gaza? Now, you can keep on interrupting, because the longer you interrupt, the more time I get. And I'm loquacious, I love to talk. So you got the right one here, because I can go back and forth. Now, if that's what you want, let's do it. But I'm talking about you're disrespectful to the people in these meetings, and we don't understand all of this. And you're trying to be bullies, pushing your opinion on us when we're trying to understand what is it? They tell you no clapping, blang, 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 blang. They tell you no bamin' on the windows, boom, 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 boom. They tell you no noise, snap, 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 snap. See, that's what I do, I make you get up and get out the room when you can't understand what someone is feeling. And I'm upset. You get more flies with honey than you do vinegar. And I'm seeing vinegar in this place, and I don't like it. I don't like it. If you want something done, come in peace. Come with some real solutions. How dare you ask this city council to divest when it has nothing to do with the issue? Why don't you ask Trump to pull his businesses out of Russia? Why don't you ask Trump to stop getting money from Dzerchebay and Putin? You're not brave enough to do that. Why don't you get on the phone and call Hamas and say, "Release the hostages, and let's stop this, because we don't want that." Do you even know how to get in touch with Hamas? Do they have a headquarters? Do they have a telephone number that you can call? Can you put this on TikTok and send it to them? Absolutely not. This is really silly. I'm asking you, if you really want to see something done, come in peace. A lot of your children have been rude to me, I don't even know any of you guys. And your children walk past and say nasty things to me? For what? For what? I don't care. I really don't care. But it's showing the home training and it's not even about the issue. You guys have taken away from the issue and made it about these people here that are elected trying to do a job. And you're disrupting the flow of city government. Now, I'll talk to anybody. I'm loquacious. I love to talk. I had a talk show. I've done radio. So, I can go all night long. I'll even give you my phone number. Call me and tell me what this is really about. Because this is not about a ceasefire. This is about intimidation. This is about bullying. And I'm asking my elected official not to partake in something that has nothing to do with this government here in this city.
Order. Order.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name and the city you live in.
Good evening. My name is Mohammed Halilovic. I'm a resident of Farmington Hills. So, six months and counting, we've been coming here. And honestly, tonight, you know, when I saw the agenda, you know, I thought really that something was gonna happen. And, you know, I guess I was fooled and so many of us were fooled, thinking that actually this was gonna happen. Even though, and I'll read some of the points here because I believe some of the members here mentioned they haven't had a chance to review it, even though it came out the same day, I didn't have a chance to look at it myself too. But before that, I do, you know, I do wanna give credit to Mayor for at least putting this on the agenda. So, thank you, Teresa. And, but for the rest, and Jackie, I do wanna thank you for vouching for the proclamation. But even when you read the proclamation, you know, and I'll reference, you know, a couple. I guess Randy and Valerie and John, you guys were the main opponents to the proclamation. And, you know, when I read it, and I'll just read point six, actually, points, yeah, six and seven, just in case you haven't read them. And really, honestly, when you read it, I mean, this is so watered down. So, that's why I had some hope that this was really gonna go through. But, you know, even as watered down as it is, I still, you know, see Randy and Valerie and John, you guys objecting to. But, I mean, just to show you how watered down this is, and I don't understand, John, when you made some points saying that, you know, this is dividing the community. So, let me just read a couple, you know, two of the points here. It says, "The city supports the rights of the community members expressly asking the city council not to opine or provide an opinion on the situation and/or who are not seeking a ceasefire." And then, "The city further supports the rights of the community members seeking to pursue durable bilateral ceasefire. We stand in solidarity with innocent Palestinians, Israelis, and residents of Gaza." I don't know what's so controversial about this. I mean, even though, you know, it's not, the city is not specifically endorsing, but it's just saying, you know, "We support both sides." So, I don't know, John, when you mentioned that, you know, this is really, you know, dividing the community, I don't know what the proclamation is supposed to say, that we support genocide? And I'm assuming, I don't know if that would make you happy. But then, not to mention, John, you mentioned that, you know, we should have a ceasefire, at least put it on the agenda. So, I implore you, I know Jackie and Michael, we've had conversations, put it on the, at least vote on it. And actually, if there's one thing that I do appreciate, at least now I know, because the last six months, I really, honestly, haven't heard, you know, most of you express your opinions about this. And now, I really understand and see, John, where you stand on this because it doesn't look like there's much humanity left in here. Because when I read this, really, all it's saying is that, you know, we support both sides. So, I don't know what is it supposed to say? That we support only the people that commit crime? I really don't understand it, John. So, I really, and if you haven't had, I believe Randy mentioned that, you know, you haven't had a chance to discuss this. Okay, discuss it. Put it on the agenda for next time around. I really don't understand. And it says, number seven, "The city further recognizes that this is a community that seeks peace as a principle in line with our community's values." I don't know, John, if this is, you know, if this is really, I don't know what it's talking about. I mean, when I read the language, yet being so watered down, you guys can't agree on the simplest of the terms. So, I really, John, and Valerie and Randy, I encourage you to have a discussion with Teresa, with the mayor. I mean, I was actually surprised and shocked that you guys opposed Mayor Teresa on this. And, you know, we have been vocal and so I do appreciate that, Teresa. But I really encourage you then have a discussion. You said, "Okay, we need to discuss it." But then it came out as if you guys don't even wanna bring it next time around, never. I just don't understand what's changed. I don't understand what's changed. So, I was really hopeful for a minute, but then really, I'm super disappointed. So, I really encourage you, put the ceasefire resolution on the agenda next time around. At least vote, so at least we know where you stand. Even though we know, I appreciate it tonight, at least now I know where you stand. So, but put the actual ceasefire on the agenda next time around, so at least, you know, we get this thing over with. So, we'll keep coming here. We'll keep advocating. But I'm very disappointed. And I hope you guys have another round of having a discussion at this. You should not finish with this. Many disappointed people here, including myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name please and the city you live in.
My name is Fariah Faistehan and I live in Farmington Hills. Five months ago, I remember you released a proclamation called "Hate Has No Home in Farmington Hills." It was my first city council meeting here in terms of organizing around ceasefire. And I remember feeling so disgusted and disappointed in that proclamation because it was completely empty. It was a kind of bait that you put out, crumbs that you served to the people who had been asking for something for so long. And today, you release another proclamation with some words sprinkled in about ceasefire and Gaza and violence and, what is it? I have the words here. Quote, "Today you sent out a proclamation that Farmington Hills, quote, 'acknowledges the profound impact of the ongoing Israel-Gaza conflict and, quote, 'supports the rights of community members expressly asking council to not opine about on the situation and/or who are not seeking a ceasefire.'" This is so strange. This is so disappointing. This is so, it shows such a lack of moral nerve. I don't believe in this council anymore. I don't think I, I don't know if I ever did, but you guys have proved time and time again that you're just arms of the state. This is a country that repeatedly has called cops on its own students. You have tried to silence your own citizens within this council chamber time and time again. In the same breath that you released this proclamation, you also released another one to add more rules and regulations around the guidelines of, what is it, conduct or something in this chamber. Last week, two weeks ago, when we had our last council meeting, I sat in this front row. I didn't even make noise when I expressed agreement over a certain speech. And you asked me to leave. And now, it's just so ridiculous. I don't know how, you want to silence, you want to silence your own people. That's your goal here. And you release these proclamations saying that you are in support of something, but you're not. You're not in support of anything. This council has made it incredibly clear where they stand. And I don't believe in this council. I'm not appealing to your moral sense. Our goal is to expose your own hypocrisy. I believe in the people who have been tirelessly organizing and building power here, and we're not going to stop. We're going to keep showing up, week after week, until public pressure exposes your own ties and your own evils. So many people have tried for months to come up with speeches and ways of tackling how we can get through to you. And I think it's just been made clear that that's just not possible. We know where you stand and you've made it clear where you stand. This is exactly what I'm thinking about, who I can quote, that might appeal to something that you might know. And the only person that I can think of is someone like Martin Luther King, who called out the behavior of the white moderate. You don't stand for anything. You just say you do. You have an entire day dedicated to MLK, we do in this country. And even that is exactly just the liberalism and cowardice this country is so good at. It celebrates things, makes days, prints out posters of hijabis in diverse groups of people, but then kills and destroys their families back home. It systematically cripples those same communities within this country. That is the work of the white moderate. I'm just gonna end with a quote. MLK says, "First, I must confess that over the last few years, I have been gravely disappointed with the white moderate. I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that the black man's great stumbling block in the stride towards freedom is not the white citizen's counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace which is the absence of tension to a positive peace which is the presence of justice, who constantly says, 'I agree with you in the goal you seek, but I can't agree with your methods of direct action,' who paternalistically feels he can set the timetable for another man's freedom, who lives by the myth of time, and who constantly advises the black man to wait until a more convenient season." There is so much solidarity work in the past century, in the past half-century, that has been done between Palestine and the civil rights movement. This is happening here in Michigan. This has happened between Detroit and Dearborn during the civil rights movement and the NEXA. This is a local issue. This is something that has affected your citizens and you really just need to open your eyes. There's nothing more that can be said. Thank you.
Good evening. Your name please and the city you live in.
Sophie, Farmington Hills. Five minutes from here. Congratulations on your proclamation, Teresa. I believe the wording is, and let me look here. "I stand for the rights of those who enjoy crushing the skulls of toddlers, and I also stand for the rights of those who do not enjoy crushing the skulls of toddlers." I think that was it, right? Randy, you've been playing on your computer this entire time. What are you playing? What are you playing? Another thing, Gary, Randy's eating. Gary, you told me there's no food allowed here. Gary, you said there's no food allowed. And last week, or two weeks ago, I was here for an event. The whole hallway was full of food. But when we wanted to eat, just to break our fasts, Gary said, "There's no food allowed here." But Randy is sitting there eating and drinking. Gary, aren't you gonna stop him the way you stopped us? Jackie, how many naps have you taken today? How many? Bill, you've also been asleep. Steve, I've seen your eyes closed. Teresa, if you want us to respect this council, you get your council in order. That's your job. You make sure they're awake. You make sure they're listening. That's your job, Teresa. That's why you're the mayor. Otherwise, why are you sitting there? Now, I have a few questions for all of you. And I know you can't answer back, so I'll answer for you. City Council, do you personally know Murray Khan? Yes. Have you worked with Murray Khan while he was on the school board? Yes. Is there a council member here who has taken money from Murray Khan? Yes. Teresa, does Murray Khan live in your neighborhood? Yes. Teresa, did you give extra time to Murray Khan to speak? Yes. Did you give even one second to a NECA survivor to speak extra? No. Teresa, did you stop Murray from harassing and threatening women and children here? No. Did you stop Murray from attacking a man and calling him a Jew traitor? Jew traitor? Did you stop him? No. Did you send the police, Teresa, after Murray? The way you sent the police after a man who was trying to finish his sentence? No. But you sent the police after a man who was trying to finish his sentence. All of you are un-American. And you are failures as a council. You call the cops on people for clapping. You call the cops on people for trying to finish their sentences. You scream at us for snapping. You call the cops on people for holding signs. You will go down in history as failures. The same way that Teresa sued the city to get her name on the ballot? This city council thinks the world is theirs. Michael Bridges? Yeah, we have you on camera at the last meeting, ordering the cops to arrest someone while she was being threatened by Murray. Yeah, we have you on camera. You can't deny it. Don't you ever again say that you care about racial profiling? Don't you ever again say that you want to be a leader on racial profiling? You weaponized the cops against a Palestinian woman. That's what you did. You are exactly what you pretend to hate. You are a racial profiler. You, a black man, ordered the white cops on a brown woman to make your privileged white friend Murray happy. Shame. Now, I have 30 seconds left. I'm gonna go on to the numbers. Okay? Today, you received a resolution called Rachel Cory's Gaza-Palestine Resolution. This resolution is about ethical deals. It's about you making contracts with ethical companies instead of genocidal companies. Now, I have five seconds. I'm gonna just say, you gave a $20 million tax break for Bosch?
Thank you.
Yeah? Okay.
All right. Okay. You're out of order and you're out of order.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good eve- You good? All right. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, everybody. Airfan Shatari, Farmington Hills resident. So, we're going to discuss some things that happened here today. The mayor tried to pass a proclamation. This is something that's practiced in the city of Farmington Hills, practiced in city council, and is done at times where a statement is required to happen from city council. So, the mayor put together a proclamation. The mayor has authority in this building. The mayor has authority in this city. And for the city council not to support the mayor is embarrassing. It's embarrassing for city council. It's embarrassing for the mayor. And honestly, I'm embarrassed for you all. The fact that you, in front of everybody, I know you turned the recording off so that this wouldn't be recorded, but you literally showed complete disregard for each other. You told me this was a harmonious city council. And yet, you can't even back your mayor and in front of the entire city, said that I didn't get enough time to look at the proclamation. The special meeting on Monday, Randy, that you guys read over multiple cities' resolutions was not enough time. Over three hours you spent. That was not enough time. So, the mayor's authority was completely challenged in this chamber. That's unacceptable for this city. But, did you guys know that the mayor was gonna be trying to pass a proclamation today? Did you know that she met with me on Friday? And asked me to look at the proclamation that she would put on the agenda? And that she'd asked me to make edits to the proclamation? And I wouldn't. Because I knew you all wouldn't pass it if I made edits. We're not stupid. We know how politics works. There's backdoor deals and then there's the chamber. We made the backdoor deals. And you challenged your mayor's authority. Or the mayor challenged yours. But there's division on this city council now. Either you didn't get enough time in a three-hour meeting to look at their city resolutions or the mayor tried to sneak one under you. But there's division going on in this city hall. And I don't ever wanna hear you guys say, "I don't bring a resolution," because we don't wanna cause division in our harmonious city council. Never wanna hear that again. There is division amongst you all and you need to figure out where you all stand. And then you tried to cause division even further. You tried to cause division with your staff. You texted the police and said, "Have them be quiet outside or we're adjourning this meeting." Put hands on them. Weaponize the police. Put hands on little children that are here trying to see what the political process looks like. This is not leadership from all seven of you and the city managers. You put your staff in a bad position. You told them, "Kick them out." I saw the text. I saw Chief King's face. That strife on his face because his leaders are telling him, "Kick them out." That's not how this works. So, let me show you how leadership works. I had to get buy-in on that proclamation. I had to get buy-in on that proclamation, guys. My name was on it. And I told my team, "I'll put this out there that my name is on it." You guys don't worry about it. I know there's people in our group that are gonna criticize in it being too watered down. Don't worry, I'll take the blame for it. And they didn't let me. They said, "No, we're gonna go in together, and we're gonna say this is the right proclamation for this city." When you guys weaponized the police and wanted to kick us out of City Hall, I got on a chair and just put my hand up. And everyone quieted down. And I said, "Don't miss this opportunity to make a public comment." And we had Sister Husnia back here, getting up on the stairs, saying, "Let's move outside. Let's not get kicked out. Let's not miss our public comment time." And you had Safa getting up there, telling people, "Here's the milestones that have happened in this City Council. Here's the way to speak in public comment." Guys, that's leadership. When you sacrifice and you make sure that others back you up, that's leadership. None of you backed up the mayor, or the mayor tried to slide one under you. There's a lot of division going on here. So, I'm not gonna ask for a proclamation. Certainly, you had more than enough time in a three-hour meeting on a Monday. What I'm gonna ask for is now, somebody put a resolution on the agenda. I heard you had one today. Frankly, we probably brought that resolution to you guys, didn't we? We had the city change the way you conduct yourselves in City Hall, right? So, we got that resolution passed. I'm gonna ask for another resolution. Mike, Jackie, Teresa, resolution on the agenda in June because you canceled the May meeting, asking for a ceasefire resolution from the city of Farmington Hills.
Thank you. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Jenna, and I live in Farmington Hills. And I know all of you by now. After several months of advocating, it is an utter shame that the word ceasefire is still controversial amongst a few of you. For a split second, I felt it was somewhat of a reassurance that, over these past several months, some of you found a shred of humanity. A ceasefire proclamation should have been passed by the City Council months ago. While some of us met with most of you early on, this beautiful community, filled with so much diversity, has been exercising their rights of diplomacy to show up, speak out, and remain steadfast. We will keep coming. Alhamdulillah. All thanks to God. I don't think the language of the proclamation went far enough. This is a genocide, not a conflict. This genocide is happening in Gaza, not in Israel and Gaza. The resilient people of Palestine have been suffering through the unimaginable for 76 years by the colonial settler project called Zionism. The genocide in Gaza and the assault on Gaza by Israel has significantly intensified, leading to an insurmountable account in loss of life, as well as a man-made famine, while humanitarian aid is being deliberately withheld, including settlers attacking aid convoy trucks, resulting in a rise of death in children due to starvation. Let us also remember the many, many, many mass graves being uncovered over these last few weeks around Al-Shifa Hospital. Gaza has reached a point of epic catastrophic proportion. Yesterday was Mother's Day. And I have to be honest. It was the same as any other day. Over the past many months, not a single moment of the day passed without remembering the mothers of Gaza, children of Gaza, and those we often don't mention, the men of Gaza. According to the UN... According to the UN and multiple human rights groups, two mothers are killed every hour in Gaza. I want you to think about that for a moment. How long have we been in this chamber? How many mothers in Gaza have died in that time? How many mothers are burying their children, or children burying their mothers? Or those not even able to have a proper burial because they can't find their loved one? Or all of their pieces belonging to their loved one? This is the time to be strong and united. For alhamdulillah, through great trial comes triumph. I believe strength is not measured only in numbers. However, it is also the sole belief that the promise of God will be fulfilled. It's the strength in faith. I want to recognize the strength of Gaza, the strength of courage. It is a testament to the women of Gaza as they hold back tears in front of their young children, stand strong even in the sight of having lost nearly everything, except their faith and full trust in the promises of God. It takes courage and strength to believe and remain steadfast during a genocide. The strength of courage is a testament to the women of Gaza as they pick themselves up every day for what is left for them in this life. Their strength comes through believing in the promises of God. The strength of courage is a testament to the children of Gaza, those who literally have no family members left, our orphans, those who have undergone amputations with no anesthetic or pain meds, and to the children who bear witness to the slaughter of their families in front of their eyes, the children who are wishing to be dead. These are children, and they want to be dead. The strength of courage to those facing a man-made famine while hundreds of trucks filled with aid sit at the borders because they are blocked by Israel. Our community continues to suffer through tremendous loss of Palestinian lives. We are over eight months into this genocide, ethnic cleansing, and man-made famine. It is imperative now to pass that ceasefire proclamation or resolution, as Brother Irfan just stated. And I will leave you with this. In our thousands and in our millions, we are all Palestinians. Free, free Palestine!
Order, please. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name's Jenny. I live on Turtle Island. I live with Turtle Island. I live on stolen land. I'm feeling a sense of people are tired. It's a very late night. Five minutes until midnight. I'm feeling tired, too. This is only my second meeting, and I'm already tired of this bullshit. Anybody else feeling tired? We see it. And we all wish we were not here this late. Like, I want to give up some of my time and just take a moment of silence collectively for all of the lives lost, all of those that are trying to live and wishing they maybe weren't, all of those who are holding their ground on their homeland even though they know they're risking their lives and their families' lives. I feel sick right now in my stomach. Really sick. I didn't feel like this way when I came today. I felt energized by the people and the organizers who are sharing their stories, their deep, deep traumatic stories that they shouldn't have to be standing here at 11:30 at night sharing. Now, my stomach hurts again. My stomach's been hurting a lot since October 7th. Anyone else feel sick to their stomach? Just from hearing the stories of trauma tonight? Sit with that for a minute. How does your body feel? How does your neck and shoulders feel? And your back? You guys have been sitting here since 7? Oh, yeah, I think you had a meeting before that? That's a long time. I also want to give up time to you if you need to stretch, move, so that you can better listen and participate for the rest of folks that have something to say tonight. I don't like to be in this position right now for a lot of reasons. I get nervous, public speaking. I do a lot better listening. I was really confused, and I'm gonna look for the answer about prayer when the police officer had to remove the Muslim woman who was praying quietly over here on the side, disturbing nothing? And that's part of her faith and her religion is to pray at that time. It's not a place for prayer, you said, but this meeting starts with a public prayer. I'm confused. Mr. Bridges, I keep seeing you smiling, and I'm not really sure what that means. And you got a great smile. Sometimes it feels like you think what you're hearing is funny. So, I want you to know sometimes it comes across like that. Human to human, I want to believe that it's a smile like a good trouble smile. Like, you're glad these folks out here, these people are organizing and speaking power to your associates in this room, who may not stand where you do on this. But just know that everybody might not see that smile that way. I want to thank those of you who have been looking at the speakers really most of the time. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Noel, Mayor, Mr. Bridges. Basic communication skills, active listening, includes looking at the person speaking. Seems like those in public service would know that. Mr. Bruce, I have no idea where you've been during this meeting. But you're certainly not showing up as a public servant or an elected community member. It's just so disrespectful as people are sharing their very personal stories of war and trauma, even if you have a different voter segment or a different viewpoint. It's disgusting. I've seen you look up once at someone who was speaking. She was a white woman. She was speaking from the interfaith council. I want to believe that because you looked at her, it wasn't because she was talking about the pool. That somewhere in deep inside of you, you've got some inner faith interest, concerns. It's so sad that those that are most impacted have to be here at all, especially multiple times in late into the night, relieving this trauma over and over again.
Thank you.
My heart breaks over and over again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, please. Next, please. Thank you very much. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Good evening. My name is Lena. I'm from Farmington Hills. I was passing by this evening, and I saw everyone dressed in Palestinian flags. And I thought that this was an opportunity to stand for Palestine. I did not have a speech prepared for today. My dad was born in Palestine, and he would tell me stories of using rocks, him and his brothers, to try to defend himself, and that a missile had passed right beside his head and almost killed him. This did not start in October. This has been going on for many, many, many years. My father has been here for over 40 years. This is still happening. And the fact that we are talking about children, small, tiny children under the rubble, and people are smirking, sleeping, looking away, evasive. Why? How? Not just one child, not two children, not 100 children. We're talking about tens of thousands of children, probably even more if you take into consideration the amount of years that this has been going on for. Why are Palestinian people any different? The fact that we have to be here till midnight to beg you? You can do something. Free Palestine and ceasefire now.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
I live in Turtle Island, and my name is Gaza. And Mayor Rich, apparently you threw us a crumb earlier. I'm gonna throw it back at you. Let me tell you why. I have noticed that you have tried to be more engaged than anyone else here. And at least, you have not hid your true colors the way the rest of you, the so-called allies, the slithering allies behind closed doors. Yeah. Be part of yourself with your smug smile. Okay? Now... I'm not gonna give you guys any more time because you guys don't matter. I'm here for the people of Palestine. Free, free Palestine. From the river to the sea. Free, free Palestine. Palestine will be free. From the river to the sea. Palestine will be free. From the sea to the river. Palestine will live forever. You hear that? Palestine, Palestinians are the Iron Dome of the Middle East and the rest of the world. Because if it hadn't been for my people, the Palestinian people, the steadfast people, guess what? The Zionists would have your home. Yeah. They'd have your church right there on 13 in Farmington. Yeah. You wouldn't be able to scream about the destruction of Jerusalem. You've had me fooled with your intent look and your studious, engaged look. No, no, no. Just back off. Let's not squint anymore. You might blind yourself from all the squinting you've done. I can trace the land, my family's land, back 400 years. What can you do? My grandfather, like the gentleman that came earlier, he fought in World War I against the British. What can you say about your grandfather? I bet you don't even know who he is. All of you. We are rich in culture, in intelligence, in courage. We stand up for justice. We stand up for justice for right and wrong, no matter who is being persecuted, no matter who is being oppressed. That's who we are. I'm not gonna beg you to listen to me. I'm gonna beg you to pay attention, to pick up your head from your computers. Couldn't care less. Okay? That drink of water that you like to drink and eat in front of us, just remember, those kids in Gaza haven't had a drink since way before October 7th. The 99% of the drinking water in Gaza have not been fit for human consumption since 2005. Palestinians don't have an airport. They did in 1948 in the city of Lidd. But guess what? They did in 1948 in the city of Lidd, but guess what? The apartheid state of Israel stole it. Palestinians don't have a military, they don't have a navy, they don't have an army. It's not a war, it's a genocide. Palestinians are the Iron Dome of the Middle East. Okay? Zionists would be all over the place taking your home, Valerie, taking your home, Randy, and you, Jackie. All of your homes would be gone if it wasn't for Palestinians. It's a good thing that Palestinians diaspora in the entire world because they lifted every single country they came to. They lifted every single country they built up and lift every single country they went to. But it's a damn thing for Palestinians because we lost our homeland to thieves, thieves that were backed by the British. Our, our history is rich. Free, free Palestine. Ceasefire now. Ceasefire now. Ceasefire now. Ceasefire now. Free Palestine. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. From the sea to the river, Palestine will live forever. Free Palestine, free Palestine, free Palestine, free Palestine. Ceasefire now. 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 Free Palestine, free Palestine. Palestine will live forever. Ceasefire now. 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 From the river to the sea.
Thank you.
From the sea to the river.
Thank you.
Palestine will live forever.
Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Good evening. Richard Ensley, Farmington Hills.
Can you move them closer to the microphone, please?
Yes. Can you hear me? Mayor Rich and members of council, I just want to honor you for spending time with us, hearing us tonight. And Mayor Rich, I, I really have appreciated the order you've kept as, through this meeting and the authority that you're expressing. I just want to honor that. So, thank you. That's important to me as a member or as a resident of Farmington Hills that we have a strong mayor, a strong council. So, thank you. I know that as I've watched these meetings, I know that councils' hearts have been moved just as mine has been for, for the stories that we're hearing, for the, the pain and the suffering that, that's being experienced, not, not just abroad but here. The citizens of Michigan and in Farmington Hills, there's, there's people with families that are experiencing pain. I, I just wanna, I wanna acknowledge that and I know that I've been watching you guys. I believe you have been listening. I believe you've been listening for months. I've, I've watched the, I've watched the public comments on YouTube. I've watched your faces. I believe you've been listening and I appreciate that. I also have seen that you've made it clear that calling for action in an international conflict is outside of your authority and your scope as, for the city. And I agree that that, that's true. And regardless of the pain that people are experiencing, which is very real, that doesn't change the scope of your roles. And it doesn't change that Farmington Hills City Council does not have business involving the city in these matters. Rather, we citizens elected you to conduct city business. This resolution and this proclamation, from my perspective, are not city business. This is the wrong platform for what is being asked. Perhaps Lansing, perhaps Washington DC, perhaps even Oakland County, but this municipality is not the platform for it. And what I believe is, is actually happening is there's, there's basically a collection of cities that are being gathered up of winds over like we've got this city to, to make a resolution, we've got this city to make a resolution. So, what I've heard was to take that to Biden and I don't think that's the right approach either. And none of it really changes the fact that it isn't really what you guys do. But what I've been seeing here tonight is I've been seeing bullying and intimidation, threats and dishonor towards our elected officials and I haven't appreciated it. This is not the way to get things done. Many tonight have said that you should grow a backbone. I want to thank you for expressing one. I believe that if you compromise, my concern is that by the city compromising, they will actually open a door to become vulnerable to every activist group that comes in the future for every type of, every type of political or social cause. And I'm not saying there's not merit to those political and social causes and I absolutely believe there's merit to this one. But, but I'm concerned that the council is going to become, if we open the door, then we, we've set precedent, just like we've been hearing about Ukraine. I believe that was a mistake and I believe it's coming back to bite us now. And so, I just, again, wanted to express honor for you. I want to express honor for everyone who came tonight and, and expressed, expressed their voice and, and, and expressed their free speech and, and called out for, for what they, what they saw was just, what they, where they needed justice, where they saw suffering. And, and I want to honor that. And so, I thank you and I thank everyone who's, who's come tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Hi. My name's Ryan. I live and work in Farmington Hills. I'll be really brief. I know you're ready to go home, but I wanted to just offer a different perspective as much of what you've heard tonight. There are many, 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 many hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people who are not coming to not add another hour of comment to these evenings, to, to bring another perspective, another side. And that is, thank you for holding, what I see that you're doing is you're actually holding something called city, that there's actually something called a city and that city has boundaries, that city has rules and that city has a way of government. And like the last speaker was just saying, rather than the accusations of the absence of fortitude and character and backbone, the opposite, six months, five months, six months of holding to something called city, holding to something of boundaries, of city limits and business that works within that city. So, thank you, really is what's in my heart. Thank you. I honor you. Theresa, Mayor Rich, I honor you. I did not vote for you.
It's okay.
But I've watched you for these five, six months and have been wowed by your character and by the character of this council. And so, thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
Farmington Hills. My name's Pete. I heard that Zionist Khan called us the mafia or some, something silly like that. He's a fool and you guys are, oh, I mean, I don't know who's friends with him or not, but I wanted to just say that there were some comments about how the city or at this level shouldn't be, you know, making proclamations and things like that. But what's happening right now is not at all like normal. The god, you know, the genocide that's going on. So, for us to ask you to make a proclamation, it's not really out of the city's business to do this. We citizens are asking you to do something which is not extraordinary. When Ukraine got their little proclamation, that was just a war overseas. There was no genocide or anything. That was just a war at the time. And you guys felt like you needed to do that. For some reason, someone brought it up and you did it. But here, this is like, people are getting killed constantly and I don't know if you guys even watch anything on social media. You know, you guys are all at that age where, you know, you're still watching CNN and like CNBC or MSNBC and all these BS networks and get all your news from that. So, it makes you guys ignorant. And that's not disrespectful, Ms. PJ.
PG.
PG.
Okay.
Okay, PG. I'm just letting her know it's not disrespectful.
All right. Please.
She can talk. I don't mind her talking to me. It's no big deal.
But this is our last person for public comment. Let's, please let Mr. Peristakis speak. Oh, maybe not the last.
You guys are up for reelection at some point, '25, and I'm going to be running, not running against you, but I'm going to be organizing that you guys don't get elected. And then the next election after that, the same thing. You guys don't stand up for what we've been asking. Justice, I mean, it's such a silly, silly concept to come up here, I don't know, 10 times I've been up here, to ask for you to just, some stupid letter. Yeah, collectively, all the cities, you get these letters and then all of a sudden, your state is like sees that, you know, we've got 20 cities that want, want this to be passed and then the state will then proclaim it as well, like Hawaii. Why does Hawaii like think they got anything to say? I don't know what type of respect you guys want from us. We all come up here crying, yelling, screaming. And we've asked nicely, we've yelled at you, but what, what, I'd like to know like what you guys as politicians, what you need to make something happen. Do you need a bribe or something like that or do you need, do you need like people threatening you? Like, how does it work? Maybe I should run, maybe I should run for city council.
Yeah.
So, I want to see what it's like to be part of the crew, you know? And I'm kind of bored with my regular nine to five. Maybe I should just come here. You guys always, every time I come here, you guys got a, you know, a bunch of food out there and sodas and stuff like that. It looks like it's fun. But I promise you, you guys are gonna have a headache come reelection time and I'm gonna make sure that I'm part of that.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name's Hanan and I'm from Debo, Michigan. I was actually not prepared to speak today, but honestly, I'm just so shocked seeing all of your faces. How could you hear that children are dying? You see the pictures, I'm sure you see the pictures. How can you have a smile on your face? How can you just, like, just show a little bit of sympathy? There's no reactions, no eyebrows, no nothing. It's crazy to see. Are you guys even human? Like, do you have a heart? You have children of your own. Just close your eyes and imagine your own children dying, your own children scared to death. I mean, I came from Yemen and I experienced one year of the war and it was terrifying. My mother would hold us close to the wall and that feeling of seeing my mom cry because she's terrified for us. My mom did everything in her power to keep us safe and one of her solutions was even leave, leaving to here so she can provide for us so we can go to a place that's safer. And you guys are just standing there. You have no sympathy. You don't know how it feels to hear drones 24/7. You don't know how it feels to see your own children having their, their hands, their legs amputated. You have no sympathy whatsoever. You see, I'm sure you see pictures, I'm sure you hear the news. You guys are not blind and you won't call a ceasefire? Seriously? And I don't know what else to say because honestly, I, I look at all of your faces and you guys just look heartless. There's no point of even talking to, to you guys because when somebody has no sympathy, they have, you just, why are you even a human? I mean, compare an animal to a human. And for the remaining of the two minutes, I'm just gonna keep saying free Palestine just to waste your time. Free, free Palestine. Free, free Palestine. Free, free Palestine. Free Palestine. Free, free Palestine. Free Palestine. Free Palestine. Free, free Palestine. Free, free Palestine. Ceasefire now. 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 Free, free Palestine. Free, free Palestine. Free, free Palestine. Ceasefire now.
You're out of order in this room.
Ceasefire now. Ceasefire. Ceasefire now. 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 Free, free Palestine. 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 Ceasefire now. 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 I hope you choke on it. Ceasefire now. 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 And I keep going about my-
Thank you. That's your time. Good evening. Your name, please, and the city you live in.
My name is Shiruq, which means sunrise in Arabic. My grandmother named me that. She is a Palestinian woman who was displaced in the Nakba in 1948. And it's been about 75 years since then.
And you live in where, please?
Since the Nakba. There are hundreds and thousands of Palestinians that were kicked from their homes, including my beloved grandma, Allah rahimah. She was a child being held at gunpoint, a helpless child seen as a threat. You'd think 73 years later, things would change, but it's only gotten worse. 16-year-old Saaid Oda murdered for just entering his village along with 39 of the other children killed in Gaza this week. When will it end? I want better for us. And it's not a conflict, it's a genocide. There are thousands and thousands of Palestinians getting killed and I, you guys clearly don't even care about the numbers. And I just wanted to shed light of what, how it affects millions. I was born in America. I was born and raised here. I am an American citizen. It affects all American citizens. It affects me, affects all the Americans in this country. You might think this is not an American conflict. It does affect America. And since we've been here for about six hours, I am going to read 60 of the names of people in Gaza that have been killed by Israelis and their ages. Number one, Aisha Khalil Hamdan Al Astal. She's 72 years old. Number two, Wahba Abdullah Husein Al Astal. She was 65 years old. Number three, Ibrahim Al Astal. He was 62 years old. Mohammed Al Astal. He was 61 years old. Nadia Al Astal. She was 60 years old. Selwa Al Astal. She is 60 years old as well. Hannah Al Astal. She was 59 years old. Soleiman Al Astal. He was 58 years old. Yussi Al Astal. She was 55 years old. Shafiqa Al Astal. She was 54 years old. Anwar Al Astal. He was 54 years old. Waila Al Astal. She was 51 years old. Wael Al Astal. She was 49 years old. Marwa Al Astal. She was 48 years old. Abdullah Al Astal. He was 48 years old. Rafa Al Astal. He was 47 years old. He was 47 years old. Wajdan Al Astal. She was 46 years old. Ramzi Al Astal. He was 45 years old. Sahir Al Astal. She was 44 years old. And we're on number 20 right now. So imagine there's still a whole list of Al Astal family that was murdered, murdered by the Israelis, a whole bloodline wiped. Does that not hurt you to your core? Does that not hurt you to your core? I'll continue. Number 20, Mohammed Al Astal. He was 44 years old. 21, Nada Al Astal. She was 43 years old. 22, Ala Al Astal. She was 41 years old. 23, Sotfa Al Astal. She was 39 years old. 24, Hussain Al Astal. He was 38 years old. 25, Hisham Al Astal. He was 37 years old. 26, Ala Al Astal. She was 36 years old. 27, Abdullah Al Astal. She was 34 years old. 28, Mohammed Al Astal. He was 34 years old. 29, Amana Al Astal. She was 34 years old. 30, Afnan Al Astal. She was 33 years old. Halfway there. Are you guys getting tired? Are you guys getting tired of hearing the names? Well, imagine how tired they are. They're dying. They're dying. So I'm not, there's 6,000 people just on this one list. Okay, 31, Mohammed Al Astal. He was 33 years old. 32, Samar Al Astal. She was 32 years old. 33, Umar Al Astal. He was 31 years old. 34, Majid Al Astal. He was 28 years old. 35, Khalil Al Astal. He was 27 years old. 36, Hamza Al Astal. He was 26 years old. 37, Amel Al Astal. She was 24 years old. 38, Osama Al Astal. He was 24 years old. 39, Abthah Al Astal. She was 24 years old. 40, Hafsa Al Astal. She was 24 years old. 41, Sham Al Astal. She was 24 years old. 42, Hisham Al Astal. He was 23 years old. 43, Majda Al Astal. She was 22 years old. 44, Mohammed Al Astal. He was 22 years old. And I'm just going to read through the first names of the rest. Mohammed, Rakan, Sara, Samah, Bilal, Abd, Mohammed, Sara, Dania, Ahmed, Ahmed, Abir.
Thank you.
Mohammed, Fatma.
Thank you.
That's it. That's 60 people. I hope that's enough.
Thank you. Okay, I see no one else for, oh, one more. Your name please and the city you live in.
My name is Evite Gil. I live in Farmington Hills. I just got out of bed because I was made aware of this meeting and had to just run over here. I don't understand what's happening here. Hello, all you friendly people. I just want to say, I'm an Israeli-American, I'm a Jewish-American, daughter of Iranian Jews who had to escape the Ayatollah's regime. Okay? There is no genocide in Gaza. In fact, yesterday, the UN finally admitted that they have been doubling their figures. That's on every, okay, they can all leave, I don't care. I don't think Farmington Hills should be involving themselves. These people have never been in what's so-called Palestine. They've never set foot in the Middle East. Okay? I have. I've lived half my life there. I know the culture, I know the mentality. This is bullying. Farmington Hills has nothing to do with Israel. There is no Palestine. The Palestinians could have had a nation, but they chose to make war. Israel only wants peace. Today was Israel's Independence Day. We sang our national anthem, which speaks about hope, hope and peace. Have you read the lyrics of the Palestinian National Anthem about the vendetta? And they will cross frontiers and conquer lands. So this starts with Israel, but it will never end with Israel. They're coming for America too. I mean, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Security back to my car.
I think I need security back to my car, because this is a lynch mob out here. I am seriously afraid for my life as a Jew in America. Afraid for my life. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is the city attorney report?
Holy shit.
No comments. No, all good.
Okay, thank you. There being no further items on the agenda.
Most adjourned.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, Farmington Hills. Good morning, Farmington Hills. We are adjourned.